And we are live streaming. Ken, do you want to test your audio?
Oh, is that me?
Oh, yeah, you. You can, Bush.
I said, Ken.
Are. You sound great. You want to go ahead and mute yourself?
Sure.
Thank you. John, do you want to test your audio?
Yeah, does that work?
Sounds great. Okay, you can mute yourself.
Okay, we're rolling up to the hour here. I just want to check in with Cindy, our city clerk, to see if we're ready to roll once we get council all on board here.
Yeah, we should be ready when we get the quorum.
Cindy, thank you for sending out that extra link.
My pleasure.
Okay, we're getting to six o'clock here. It looks like we've got our full council on board. We have our city manager, our city clerk, and joining us today is Joanna Jin from BB&amp;K. Mr. Walsh won't be with us today, but Ms. Jin, thank you for being here. So with that, we'll get rolling here at 6:00 PM, and this is the City of St. Helena regular city council meeting Tuesday, June 28, 2022. And Cindy, do you have some remote access instructions for us, please?
I do. Let me share my screen. Okay, to participate remotely, you would dial 669-900-6833 at the prompt. You'd enter the meeting ID, which is 886-4191-8413. You'd press the pound, and during public comment, to be able to speak, you would press star nine.
Thank you very much, and I'll also mention that simultaneous Spanish interpretation services during meetings can be scheduled upon request. To ensure interpreters are available, requests must be made at least 72 hours in advance by calling the office of the city clerk at 707-968-2640, or emailing cityclerk@cityofsthelena.org. So we'll move now to our roll call, please.
Mayor Eldred.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Here.
Council Rashitoe.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Artie.
Here.
Thank you. We'll move to our pledge of allegiance. If folks would mute your microphones, and please follow with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move now to our adoption of the agenda. I'll look to our city clerk, Ms. Japhopolis, for any agenda updates.
Yes, there are some updates. Item 8.1 will not be heard tonight, and then we would like to request that item 10.2 be heard after consent.
I am certainly in support of that, moving that forward. I hope that there's support on the council for that. And so with that, then I would look for a motion.
I'll move approval of adoption of the agenda as amended.
A second.
And a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Council Rashitoe.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Artie.
Yeah.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. Very well, now we'll move to public forum. This is where members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to four minutes. Each person is entitled to speak on any non-agendized item only once at any meeting. Brief questions by council members for clarifications may be posed and answered, and council members may make requests that items be placed on future agendas. But in accordance with state law, no substantive discussion or action may take place unless and until the matter properly appears on the agenda. Is there any public comment at this point?
There is none.
Seeing no public comment, we will then close public comment. We'll bring it back to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. This is reports by staff and our council members on items of general interest. Brief questions for clarification may be posed and answered, and council members may request that items be placed on a future agenda, except under certain circumstances. The Brown Act prohibits any other discussion or action by the city council. I'll look first to our city manager, Mr. McCann.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the community. We have a couple of things to update you on, four items tonight. First, we had a very productive meeting yesterday with our congressman, Congressman Mike Thompson, along with our state senator, Bill Dodd, and our assembly member, Aguark Curry, along with mayor and the vice mayor, looking at possible improvements to the safety, pedestrian safety along Highway 29, specifically Spring and Highway 29, where we had just an awful pedestrian accident recently, and then all along the corridor. We had a very good meeting with representatives from Caltrans. They committed to working with the city to make immediate improvement, and then some longer term improvements, both to the Spring Street intersection, as well as to explore opportunities for improvements along the corridors. Some very, very positive work, and great appreciation to our congressman, who organized this and really made things happen. I'd like the chief to maybe fill us in a little bit on that incident and the actions of his department since that evening. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager McCann. Good evening, everybody. On May 24 of this year, approximately 9:07 PM, a hit-and-run collision was reported at Main Street, State Route 29 at Spring in the city of St. Helena. A pedestrian in a wheelchair was crossing west on Main Street in the crosswalk when he was struck by a vehicle traveling southbound. The victim sustained major injuries and was airlifted Queen of the Valley Medical Center in Napa. The suspect vehicle left the scene and was not identified by the victim or witnesses. The victim is fortunately now recovering at home. The St. Helena Police Department embarked on an intensive and thorough investigation, which resulted in the identification of both the vehicle and the suspected driver. The suspected driver is Seha Ignacio Gutierrez, who is a 76-year-old male from Napa. The investigation has led us to believe that Gutierrez was the driver of the silver 99 Toyota Camry, which we have recovered. A felony criminal complaint has been submitted to the Napa County District Attorney's Office for prosecution of the subject. The St. Helena Police Department would like to thank all those that assisted us with this investigation, as without this kind of community commitment and involvement, cases like this would go unsolved. Again, thanks to everybody that worked on it, and big thanks to my team here at St. Helena PD.
Thank you. Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you, chief. I have to reiterate what the chief said. There was some really remarkable evidence gathering, and then just good police follow-up to get us to this point. Then, Mr. Mayor or Vice Mayor, you were in attendance at our meetings. Is there anything you'd like to add to round that out?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. McCann. I just want to let the community know that Congressman Thompson was all in at the meeting, extremely forceful in making the argument about the necessity of improvements at this point of the incident and all along the corridor. He was very persuasive. There's no doubt in my mind that he got the attention of all, including Caltrans representatives and their director who was there. And so I just want to take a moment to thank Congressman Thompson, as well as staff from the local assembly and senate members. I thought it was a very well-run meeting. The mayor also was there and made very cogent remarks based on experience of living here every day. And we all, on the ground, locally, know a lot more than what folks know at Caltrans, and we articulated that in no uncertain terms. All of our staff was all in and made excellent presentations. So we all need to be congratulating our staff or looking out for our citizens, and I do. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just very briefly say that it's an opportunity for us to perhaps work a little more directly with Caltrans. That artery is, you know, we share the jurisdiction, and the meeting yesterday, I believe, is going to help us sink in much more closely with Caltrans to have them understand the circumstances on the ground beyond just the data that they receive. I also will thank city manager McCann for really guiding the meeting in an excellent way, and we all worked together, and I think got real steps forward. And so this really unfortunate event, something positive can come from, and my understanding is that the person who was hit is recovering, and we'll do everything we can to help him understand that he's supported. And from this difficult situation, something good will come to our community. So I just want to add that as we go forward. So, Mr. McCann?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just want to emphasize what Vice Mayor Doring said. We had some really outstanding help from our congressman, our state senator, and our state representative. So it's just remarkable for us to be able to rely on those folks who represent us, bring power to bear, and to help an agency help us make some improvements. So really fantastic. Two other things. One, I want to provide you all with an update on the general obligation bond. We're all anxious for that to move forward. We're so appreciative of the trust from the St. Helena residents voting in the affirmative for that. Next meeting, we'll have a measure on our agenda confirming the results of the election. No, we'll be able to move forward. April, our assistant city manager, can you maybe fill us in on what the next steps might be in the timing for the general obligation bond?
Yes. So last week, myself and administrative services director Mandy Kellogg, we had met with the city's municipal finance advisor, just to kind of preemptively get to what the next steps are. What we are going to do, I've been also working with our bond council. We are going to be taking a reimbursement resolution to the city council, probably in the next month or two. And what that will allow us to do, within a certain timeframe before a bond is actually issued, if there's design work, if there's any preliminary work that needs to be done, it will actually allow us to be able to claim that as reimbursement when we issue the bond. So that will be coming before city council. The total process that we need to go through before we can issue bonds, the first is certifying the election, which is going to come at the second meeting, or sorry, the only meeting that we're having in July. Following that, we are going to be working closely with the Public Works Department, sorry, interim, doing it at the same time, in identifying what projects we can bring forward and when we can bring them forward. And based on that, we'll make a determination on when we will actually issue the bond. We are planning on issuing it in three different tranches. We will not issue any tranche for probably anything lower than $5 million. Otherwise, it just doesn't make sense for the cost of issuance. The balance that we have to strike with the issuance of the bond is that once we do issue the bond, we have three years to spend it. So we do have to make sure that whatever plan we put forward, we are making sure that we are doing projects and spending the money before we get over that three-year timeframe. For once we decide when we need to start issuing bonds, it's typically about a three-month timeframe, about 120 days, I'm sorry, four-month timeframe, 120 days from when we actively start with going out to competitive sale. Based on the interest rates right now, we are looking at a competitive sale. So I will keep the council posted on my interactions with Mark Rincon with the Public Works Department, as well as Mandy Kellogg, as far as the next steps for the issuance. But we do have our sights on it, and we're excited that the voters, that they are entrusting us with these funds.
Great. Thank you very much, April. And then if that is not enough fun, we'll have some fun from Dave Janz about 4th of July.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Nice to see all of you. At your last meeting, I gave a brief overview on what to expect for the 4th of July, but wanted to provide the community a little bit more detail on what they can expect this coming Independence Day weekend. So on Sunday, July 3, we have a family fun night planned out at Crane Park. So this will start with some family-friendly activities, a local car show, have food vendors on hand from 6:00 to 8:30. And then right around 8:45, as we get closer to dark, we have an outdoor movie planned in partnership with Cameo Cinema. We'll be showing the film, "A League of Their Own," right there on the local ball field. This is free for everyone. And I didn't mention it before, but there's also free movie theater popcorn for everyone in attendance. So this should be a fun night. Under the stars out at Crane Park, the weather looks very favorable for this coming Sunday. And then on Monday, July 4, we'll see the return of several traditions here in St. Helena. First off is the red, white, and blue bike parade. So this will start at the intersection of Star and Harvest. It's about a one-mile bike ride through the neighborhoods that ends at Lyman Park. So we encourage the community to come out, decorate their bikes, their scooters themselves, and go on a patriotic ride through town, and end at Lyman Park just in time to take part in some more family-friendly activities. We'll have a children's zone set up, and this will all culminate with a performance from the St. Helena Community Band, who will be performing on the 4th of July for the first time since 2019. And if that's not enough, there will be free root beer floats provided by A&W during the performance. And then finally, this is after the 4th, but to cap off the week, we do have the return of our All-Star and Home Run Derby for our adult softball league out at Carpe Field on July 6. This is a great opportunity to come out and root on our local players, enjoy a fun night, have some food out at Carpe. So hopefully, three opportunities for the community to come together. We hope that you can join us for one or all of them. All the information can be found on our website, as well as on our Facebook page.
There you go. Lots of fun. Thank you very much, Dave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And are those our reports? Oh, I'm seeing Mr. Rincon.
Yes, excuse me for the last-minute interruption, Mayor, but we did post a monthly water report for the city of St. Helena. Unfortunately, it did not make it to the council packet. So if you allow me, we'd like to present some of the things that we've done to report and kind of give a highlight of what's going on with our water supply, and also to remind everyone that we are still at a stage one drought. But I've asked Martine to kind of present that, if you allow us to present the report verbally, and then we will get it posted later.
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm going to be providing an update on the May monthly water report, as well as the water supply availability of the Bell Canyon Reservoir after the May's production numbers. As of today, the Bell Canyon Reservoir elevation level is at 415 feet, representing about 79% capacity. Through the end of May, the city has delivered approximately 348 acre-feet of water through the city of Napa in our tie. Keep in mind, we did just recently have an amendment number five to the city-Napa Water Agreement approved, which allows the city to bank 200 acre-feet for use in the next five fiscal years. So we're needing to divert or deliver about 52 acre-feet in the month of June for us to reach the 400 acre-feet threshold or limit. Cindy, can I share my screen? I did want to share two graphs that represent where we're at Bell Canyon Reservoir, and then a new graph that we've implemented based off the suggestions from the last city council meeting. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this is an edit we made to our graph. This is a graph that we would normally present, starting current date and looking forward to the end of 2023, so December 2023. Based off our last city council meeting, we've made an update to include historical Bell Canyon Reservoir elevation levels. So now we're starting, beginning the graph as of July 2021. So you can see how low we got in September of 2021, and the increase after the October rains, and also again in November, December, where we reached the spillway level in December. As of May, end of May 2022, we're at 1,963 acre-feet available at Bell Canyon Reservoir, and now we're forecasting all the way through June 2024. So we're showing a total of three fiscal years on this updated graph. And this graph will also be updated and uploaded to the Public Works Department page under the water section. I also wanted to show a second graph, and this is a brand-new graph that we've implemented to the water supply staff report. This graph is going to represent the water elevation or the water surface elevation in correlation to the reservoir storage at acre-feet. So our spillway level is 2,383.69 acre-feet, 422 elevation. So this represents where we're at current capacity. This graph was done based off the end-of-May water production numbers. So right now, we're at 79%, whereas before, we're at 82.3% after May's water production. It also shows when we entered phase one initially. So we went into phase one on July 1, 2020. Our capacity at that point was 60%. And then we entered phase two on November 1 of 2020, and our capacity was at 39.4% or 399.8 elevation. And we can see as well the 25% reserve in capacity for the fire storage. So this is a new graph we implemented based off feedback from last city council meeting, and this will also be now included in the water supply staff report going forward. And that will conclude my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, is there any input from council on the charts? I had one question I just wanted to clarify. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, and thank you, Martine, for that update. Those are nice additions to the water report. I just had one quick question about, is there some way on the first chart that you could, or what is our level in our ordinance? What's it explicitly say in terms of water emergency when we're in phase one, or phase two, or phase three? What is that level, and is there a way you can indicate that?
Yeah. Yes, I can follow up and see if it's spelled out and also include that in the graphic. That would be helpful.
Yep, thank you much.
Thank you, and I'm seeing Councilmember Rashitoe.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the new graphs. I was having a hard time interpreting that first one, and understanding why we were in such a bad place last year. You know, we got so low on our water, and then the forecast is not showing getting anywhere near that. So how is that determined? I'm having a hard time just understanding that, given how serious, you know, we're having another year of drought, and just knowing we've had all these extremely hot days and still have the fire risk out there, and I just need help understanding that.
Yeah, I probably could help on that, too. In terms of, you know, what saved us is really the late October and November, late December rainfall that we got. It was almost targeted, you could say. We got over 10 inches in the watershed above Bell Canyon. So it really filled up our reservoir. It allowed us to kind of at least go back to a phase one. Prior to that, we were still in phase two, and with the reservoir filling and spilling, we felt it was an opportunity for us to go back to phase one. Of course, phase one, the difference between phase one and phase two is one's mandatory savings, one's voluntary, and we're still voluntary saving the same targeted amounts, and we are achieving those right now. So that's the difference. In terms of the projection, we're looking at worst-case scenario here historically. Now, you know, it doesn't take into account climate change, but historically, you know, the minimum amount of inches of rain over the watershed, and Martine, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's 10 inches over the entire season. So we're looking at two seasons of rainfall there, 10 inches, which is the minimum amount recorded in our history here local. So if you want to pull up the graph, and maybe that'll help kind of visualize, you know, the dire straits we were in September, got the October rain, jumped up, the reservoir quite full, and then the November, December, a couple storms there brought it to spill.
Does that answer the question, Councilmember Rashitoe?
Thank you.
That clarified for me as well. I wanted to understand the projection on the 10 inches, using the 10 inches of rain, that being our historic low. Thank you very much for the presentation. Is there anything else, Mr. Rincon, on that aspect?
No, just congratulations to the community to continue to save water, and let's keep at it. We've got a long, hot summer in front of us.
Yes, thank you. Okay, very good. So if Mr. McCann is not going to bring other reports forward, if that's what we have this evening, we'll move to our council members, and I'll look to see if council has anything to bring forward this evening. I'm seeing Councilmember Rashitoe.
Thank you. I'll just do a quick report on the two bigger meetings I attended. One was the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, where we got the news that there's going to be the automatic 10.9% rate increases that are going to kick in July 1. This is an increase that was already adopted in the franchise agreement when that was updated. So that's already baked into what happens every year for three years. That doesn't actually come to the board. It just happens automatically. There is an extraordinary rate increase if the company needs it, and the company, if once it's authorized, and the company has asked for that, so that will be considered in the future. Right now, the staff at the Upper Valley Waste Management is working on that, and we'll bring that back to the authority. We don't have that information right now. We did get the reasons behind it, and for the potential 5% over what they're already committed to get, which is that 10.9 increase, is changes to the labor market, inflation, fuel insurance, and some other expenses. We also heard about grant opportunities locally through the Upper Valley Waste Management Authority. There's $300,000, and St. Helena hasn't gone for those yet. So I reached out to our city manager, and we spoke about that, and we identified some great opportunities, and we're going to be moving forward with discussions. And Priya Nixon is going to be helping work with me to make sure that we can get some of that, some of that funding. Some ideas could be a permanent home to be able to house compost, since we can now provide, we need to be providing compost, not only making sure we're putting more of the food waste into the green bin and creating compost, but also getting it out to the community. We need a place to put that, so people can easily pick it up for free and have that. So that's one idea, possible grant idea. It could be also new containers for our parks. There's a bunch of ideas. It'll be explored. The other meeting I attended was with our mayor, was the Climate Action Committee. We had that, the agenda items. We received a presentation on the Napa County Climate Challenge website. This is a website that engages the community and actually schools and students in taking climate action, and brings it back to the individual level for what you can do. It also shares information on what local government is doing. You can customize each page per city if we want to. It turns out there's going to be a presentation to our Active Transportation Sustainability Committee coming up, so we'll hear more about that locally. We also had an item about approving the formation of a staff working group to develop We also had an item about approving the formation of a staff working group to develop a regional climate action plan. So this is going to be two staff members from our city. This idea came already from city managers that got together. And spoke with the county staff that work with us on this committee. So we approved it on the committee level. Everybody was in agreement. From what I remember, Mayor, you can correct me if I'm remembering incorrectly, but I remember everybody being in agreement, and we all voted for it. So that will be moving forward. And then we also had an update on the greenhouse gas inventory that's going to be coming early fall.
Thank you. And we will see if there's any other council input. I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to leave the meeting without thanking Chief Hartley and his staff, all of his officers, for the excellent police work. That he talked about with respect to the hit and run and identifying the vehicle and the suspect. A particular officer, if I'm pronouncing the name right, Marcela, who was apparently off duty. In Napa and did some really good police work off duty to help. Identify vehicle and the suspect. Excellent police work for a very small. Staff office. Very community oriented. Excellent in the relationships that you have with businesses to be able to use the videos and have that interaction. With our folks downtown to do what you you did. Express our gratitude to all of your officers. Chief Hartley, I really appreciate that. Blue Zones, I might, as you know, I represent the city, the Steering Committee, the Blue Zone Steering Committee. We had some good news just recently. Councilmember Chateau, Mayor. Ellsworth and I all attended a little open house at Pizzeria Trevina, which is, which has become the first. Blue Zone approved restaurant. In the Upper Napa Valley. Congratulations to this ownership and staff, the chef. Some of the things that they, that they examined to become Blue Zone approved are. Help your menu options, of course. Highlighting various choices. Of food, making changes to the actual environment of dining. Some of the things that they, that Pizzeria Trevina has done is. Revamped their menu to make it more inviting in terms of the choices. Fruit and vegetables from local farmers markets. When they're in season, they purchase those when they can. They're not offering soda, chocolate milk. Or fruit juices as default beverages for children's meals. There, they've installed a bicycle rack to make it more friendly for active transportation users, and there's many other. Things to be qualified. It's very long and lengthy, kind of a robust list. So they've met those requirements, and they have become Blue Zone approved. And then just one, I don't know if the mayor wants to talk about Sausal Junction. I know I sent a written report on that. I'll skip that. One thing that was not mentioned in the report. From staff is paving. Highway twenty-nine is going to be repaved again, starting July seventh. Basically, from here to Calistoga in portions. It's. It's following along on the completion of the PG&E gas line project. It, most of the work will be at night. So it'll probably affect Paul Doring more than all of you as I come home from Calistoga on Tuesday nights. But the community should know about that and know that there's going to be. One, one lane closed, one lane open. It's going to be slow going. This is going to be basically after seven o'clock into the early morning hours. But don't be surprised by that, community. Be patient with our Caltrans workers and. The folks who are working out there. Ted, thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe I saw Councilmember Hall, but I'm seeing Mr. McCann. May I see if there's a clarification from Mr. McCann?
Thank you. I just wanted to. Thank Vice Mayor for his recognition of our police department, but I wanted to point out something interesting. That Officer Marcela, and I think I had that correct. He's a rookie. We just brought him on. He's a brand new officer. He's a really excellent worker. Chief, do I have that correct?
That is correct. Officer Marcela is currently in the second phase of his field training. He was hired two months ago. And he hasn't even completed field training yet and is already learning quickly on how to. Identify and take on investigative matters. We're very proud of him. And thank you, Vice Mayor Doring, for recognizing our department and our hard workers.
Way to go, rookie.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Vice Mayor as well for his updates and the recognition to the, to the police department for their work. And also April, thank you for the update on the the geo bond and what are the next steps there. I know that there's been lots of questions coming in, so that's been real helpful to get the update. I was just thanking Councilmember Chateau on the, the Waste Management JPA grant monies. If I recall, I think those monies become, you know, the grants become larger and larger over time. I forget what they top out at, but. One, one thought is we do have a nice cares program in town, and some of those monies could be set aside if you. Combine lists. I don't know how we do it, but. Folks who are in need of reducing costs, who are already qualified by cares as for low income assistance. Maybe that's one other component where we can remove the cost of disposal for those folks. So just one thought, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to, you know, very respectfully. You know, maybe at some point we need to have a conversation with the city manager and city attorney in terms of, I just don't. I want to be careful in terms of Councilmember Hall. In terms of participation in the waste management conversations because of your connections there. So I just want to be very careful. So maybe a conversation we ultimately have at some point with the city manager, city attorney, to see where those, those lines lay. So appreciate it. Any other council input? So I've got a few things. First, I do also want to thank Chief Hartley and the Police Department for this excellent work, ongoing work. One of the excellent things that Chief Hartley was able to really help in the meeting with Caltrans yesterday was that connection. To helping Caltrans understand what's happening on the ground. As where it may be a disconnect with the data that they're seeing, and they're seeing, and Chief Hartley really stepped up. And help make that clear, that more work needs to be done to help them understand the real life reality, on the ground reality we're seeing. So thank you, Chief Hartley. We're going to skip a meeting, the first meeting in July, the first Tuesday, so we will be, there'll be a section here of about a month and let folks. Catch a breath as we move forward here, and then we'll be coming back at the second meeting of July. Just want to put that on people's radar. As we get into fire season, dry season, just got to hammer home the prep, the go bags, the grab lists, defensible space, community networks. All working together with Fourth of July coming up. Just want to really urge people to be very careful with any open flame or sparking. Barbecues, et cetera, being very, very careful, and of course, reminding folks that fireworks are illegal. And beyond just being illegal, the danger to really everything we hold dear here. If, if a fire gets out of control. So I just want to urge people to be as careful as possible with all flame and sparking, et cetera. I want to thank the Parks and Rec Department for this creative approach to celebrating the fourth in more fire safe ways. It's a whole new era. Of wildfire dynamics, and we're having to shift our thinking. It's a difficult thing to do. But looking for those fire safe opportunities, just want to be really thankful to Parks and Rec for how they're bringing forward something, something good, something new. In a more fire safe way. Water conservation, every drop we save today will benefit us tomorrow. Thank you for the presentation, and we just want to keep. Folks on track with the water conservation. And then two items I want to bring up, and this is possibly as we get to our meeting in. Late July and our new city manager comes on, but the consideration of looking as we transition from College Avenue. With City Hall to College Avenue from Railroad Avenue, the discussion of Railroad Avenue as, as housing, as an affordable housing opportunity. I want to have that conversation moving forward. And then finally. Or almost finally, as we come to the end of Pride Month, I also, as we come back after the sort of summer break. Have a discussion on a more permanent flying of the progress and pride flags as we move forward. So that's a discussion I'd like to get into. And then finally. In terms of Sausal Junction, really great collaborative effort up and down the valley. This is St. Helena working with. Calistoga, Yountville, Napa, and American Canyon, looking for solutions, traffic solutions, and this is a big, big project that it will benefit flow. Throughout the entire county. So that was a big step forward. So that's, that's it for me, and I will look to, I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for raising the issue about Railroad Avenue and housing as a potential topic coming up in a month or so. I definitely would support that. I think it's important that we look at all of our assets. And get back to the conversation that we started last fall, which was how, how are we handling our surplus assets? And it'd be good to run through that list again and make sure that we are. Following the process to either divest of those assets or make. Clear progress forward on doing something else with those assets. I don't think that's what the outcome was in our last meeting, and I'm not sure. What the issues were involved, but it'd be great to, to get back to it. Thank you.
Thank you. And as, as our new city manager comes on board, I believe that is a place that we can move forward. And so I look to Mr. McCann.
Thank you. Just very quickly, with that interest and that. Confirmation, we will include this on an agenda for a future discussion. Will refresh the discussion topic that you had, I think it was more than a year ago. About city surplus property. There's a process that is in place, there's a surplus. Public Property Surplus Act, there's a number of steps involved in that. It'd be good to give the council a refresher. Our city attorney's provided. An opinion memo on that some months ago. We'll get that out to the council so you can understand that process. But it'd be good to explore the opportunities to bring public land. Onto the table and explore the opportunities for perhaps a more vibrant and vital use of that land to address. A variety of needs that we have in the community. So we'll put that on our agenda, and you all can talk about that in the coming months. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Seeing no additional council input at this point. We will then move to our consent items, and this is where members of the council, the public may ask that any items be considered individually. For purpose of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment, unless that is done, one motion may be used. To adopt all recommended actions. And so I will read through to give an opportunity for anybody to raise a hand to pull one. And if our city clerk will help me keep an eye, I'll start with seven point one. Seven point two. Seven point three. Seven point four. Seven point five. And seven point six. I'm seeing a hand from Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I'd like to. Pull seven point four. I have some questions for Steph.
Okay, we'll pull that one. Any others? And I'm seeing nothing, nobody from the public. I'll look to Ms. Shapopoulos.
There are none.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to pass the consent counter with the exception of item seven point four.
So move.
Okay.
Second.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes, and we'll circle back to item seven point four. Councilmember Hardy, you have some questions?
Yes, I'm wondering how the. Payment on the promissory note. Is reflected in the budget forecast. Looking at it, I realize that. It has a current maturity date of August one, twenty twenty-two, so it. If I didn't know otherwise, I would think that that would show up in our revenue forecast for. The coming fiscal year. Am I right? Am I wrong? Please tell me how we. Show this kind of revenue in the budget. Thank you.
Yes, I can definitely answer that question. So you would not see it in the operations budget. This particular promissory note, it was to pay back impact fees specifically. So it's both water and wastewater impact fees. So it would not show on the operations side of water and wastewater. It would actually be a revenue in for the, for the impact fees themselves. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, partly, but then. Where do we show the impact fees and where does the money go? That would be my next question.
So the money for the impact.
We've received it.
Oh, once we receive the money for the impact fees, we can use it in accordance with the currently adopted impact fee schedule. And what that schedule does is when we adopt impact fees, it looks at the impact new development has on certain systems such as the water wastewater system. And it allocates a percentage of the funds that can actually use for a certain project. Right now, a lot of the funds for both the water impact fee and also the wastewater impact fee can go a hundred percent towards tertiary treatment. And so we are looking at exhausting most of the funds that we have for that to go towards the Purple Pipe Project and the wastewater treatment plant, because it will be ready for tertiary treatment.
So then are these funds accounted for in the enterprise budgets?
They, they would be accounted for in the enterprise CIP budget, so it would be linked to a capital improvement project. But in the audited financials, just to throw a little extra in there, on the audited financials, when you look at the enterprise systems for either the water or wastewater system. Those fund balances take into consideration the operations, the CIP, and then also impact fees. So in the financial statements, they're all lumped together, and then in the financial statements, it also designates the loan amount that we have that's still outstanding.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes, Mr. McCann.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just thank the council, as I like to say, there's a number of items that you've approved on consent. They're all meaningful to the community, I think. We've been talking a bit about the good work of our police department, and item on there is. Is our agreement with the Police Officers Association, providing them with a contract, terms, benefits, salaries, moving forward.
Mr. McCann, if I may interrupt, I think we have to vote an open public comment on seven point four.
I'm sorry, I thought you did it.
And get that done and then get the summary, if that's okay.
Awesome.
Okay, thank you. So any other questions on seven point four from council? I'm seeing none, so we'll look to our, our public comment to see if there's any input comment there. On seven point four.
There is none.
Seeing that, we'll bring it back to the council. If there's no additional comment, I would ask for a motion.
I move approval of seven point four.
Okay.
Was that Lester and then? Vice Mayor Doring?
That was Councilmember Hardy, yes, and Vice Mayor Doring.
Okay, Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilmember Chateau.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. So with that, Mr. McCann, we'll hand it back to you and to continue with the summary, please. Thank you.
Yes, sorry, sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to thank the council. There's a number of important items that you just approved. One of them relates to salaries and benefits for the members of our police departments, that are dispatchers as long as, as well as our officers. Just a really good statement from the city council, desiring to address salaries to make them. desiring to address salaries, to make them competitive in the market and to provide wages that are appropriate for our staff. So I thank you very much for supporting staff's recommendation. I know that the employees are pleased with that, and I think it will help us to retain our good officers, and then when we do have an opening to attract well-qualified ones like our newest rookie. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. So that was our consent calendar, and we're going to move past that. And what we've done is we've moved up item 10.2. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution appointing applicants to the Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee, Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Library Board of Trustees, and consider leaving the recruitment open for the unfilled terms of office until filled. And this is our city clerk, Cindy Shapopoulos, putting this together. Can you, would you like to give us just a little overview here and our step here in terms of making our selection?
Certainly. We held a fantastic, well-attended applicant interview meeting earlier today at 4:30. And so we have 13 applicants for various boards and committee and commissions opening. And so it's appropriate if you want to have any council discussion, or if we'd like to take a break and go ahead and have each council member complete their ballot, send it to the city clerk for ranking, and then we will rejoin the meeting, and I would announce the the rankings.
Okay, very good. I think what I'll do, first, I'll just look to see if there's any council input here. And then I will, I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, I'm just wondering whether there's really a need to rank applicants for those commissions where the number of applicants equals the number of vacancies.
My question came up earlier on that to our city clerk. I I I know that we're in the midst of evolving this process and and moving away from this ranking sort of protocol. My question is, can we do something different than is established in terms of that, or do we need to continue with what's established until we vote to make the changes once we get the pertinent information?
I would take Steph. I would take council direction.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, any thoughts here on a way to proceed with this?
Well, I think Councilmember Hardy makes a good point about the necessity of having a ranking of those particular committees that only have enough applicants to fill the open seats. I'm open to foregoing that process and just focusing on, I believe it's two committees, if I'm not mistaken, that that would require a ranking until we change that that system, hopefully soon. So I'm okay with that.
Okay, and okay, and then it was suggested also on those that we just with a single motion, bring everybody on board. Councilmember Hardy?
Well, I was just going to make exactly that suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, very good. So I think in terms of process, if we've had council input, I'll open it to public comment before we go to to our voting. I just want first to just really thank those who put their themselves forward. There will be other openings, so please, if if one of these, if you don't get one of these, please continue to keep engaged, and openings will come up. It's just very much appreciated and really necessary for our local governance and serving the community to have this type of participation. So with that, I'll look to see if there's any public comment at this point.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, very good. And with that, Cindy, how much time do you think works for you for us to break to do this?
Let's start with five minutes. And so if you can return the library board and planning commission ballots to me as soon as you can, then I can rank them and return to open session.
Okay, very good. So we'll plan on coming back. We'll say at, we'll say 6:58 and see you then. This may take just a few more minutes, but we're getting there. Thanks, everybody, for your patience.
Okay, I've got the tallies ready.
Okay, we'll bring everybody back here. And looks like everybody's coming on here, so let me make sure I'm at the item. Okay. So we have our council returned. We have our city clerk, our city manager, and our attorney. So we'll move forward now, and once again, thanking everybody for their participation and willingness to participate. I'll look to our city clerk to let us know what what the numbers are coming in. And and again, I want to let our folks know here that we are evolving this system. So we're at the tail end, and I want to thank Councilmember Hardy for really recognizing a need to evolve this. So I just I just I just want to put that out there that we're evolving the system, and everybody who's put in is very, very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. So for the Planning Commission, the top vote went to Christopher Warner.
Okay, and my thought, let's see, I I think moving through these separately will give us the best ability to move forward. So with that, I unless there's any objection, I would nominate Chris Warner for the position.
I second that motion.
And a roll call, please.
Mayor Elsberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Chito.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
And
Moving on.
We'll move then to our Active Transportation and Sustainability Committee. This is a one that had the equal number of applicants to positions. And so with that, then we'd be looking for a single motion to approve Glenn Smith, Leslie Stanton, and Madely Chandler point to those positions. So I would nominate in a single motion those three.
Second.
Mayor Elsberg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Councilmember Chito.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Okay, and now we'll move to our Library Board of Trustees, and our city clerk will let us know how that came forward.
Okay, the top four in no particular order is Terry Wood, Suzanne Rumian, Juliette Valmont, and Alexandra Haslip.
Okay. So could you read those again, please? I'm sorry.
Alexandra Haslip, Juliette Valmont, Suzanne Rumian, and Terry Wood.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And so with that, then I would nominate, and now I can do this in a single motion, the four, is that correct?
Yes, you can.
Yes, please.
Very good. So then I would nominate Alexander Haslip, Susannah Rumian, Terry Wood, and Juliette Valmont for the four available terms.
Second.
Mayor Elsberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Hardy.
Yes.
Paul. Councilmember Hall.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Chito.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And again, thank you all who who put forward, and there'll be plenty of space for other opportunities. And our Parks and Recreation Commission, I would nominate our three applications or applicants from Doug Bochen, Michelle Deasy, and Ty Taylor.
I'll second.
Mayor Elsberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Chito.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Very good. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for going through this process. As I say, we're on a step of evolving it, but your your community participation is 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 very, very much appreciated. So we'll all move forward together with this. Thank you, and we'll now move, we'll move back to our agenda here and come back into our order of 8.1 will not be heard, so we'll move to item 9.1 under Old Business. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving revision number three. It's a city council policy PF1 0016 Financial Policy Related to A Compliance with GASB Statement Number 98, Updating the Name Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, B Update Language Related to Financing Capital Improvement Projects, and C Repealing and in rescinding any previous policies or administrative memoranda which are inconsistent with City Council Policy P-F1-0016 Financial Policy Revision Number Three. And this is our Assistant City Manager, Dr. Metz. In rescinding any previous policies or administrative memoranda which are inconsistent with City Council Policy P dash F one dash zero zero one six financial policy revision number three, and this is our Assistant City Manager, Dr. Metz.
Great. Thank you very much. So before you, we are actually going to be doing two different things with this item tonight. So if you want to go to the next slide, please, Cindy. So the first thing is recommended adoption of the policy updates, which I'll briefly review with you. And then the second item is to have council direction to staff for future policy considerations. What has been brought before City Council tonight is specifically related to the initial question regarding issuance of debt for capital improvement projects specifically for the enterprise fund. In the midst of that, I know we've had several council. Council discussions regarding funding, general fund reserve levels, as well as some other comments from other council members to both myself and City Manager McCann. So we definitely don't want to lose sight of that. So the second portion of this report is going to be getting some future policy consideration information from from City Council. So the next slide, please. So real quick background on this item is council did have numerous discussions regarding the current policy as it relates to the issuance of debt for CIPs. Again, more specifically, as they relate to the enterprise funds as well as issuance of general obligation bonds or go bonds. At the February eighth, twenty twenty two meeting, staff did present a draft policy to City Council for review. At that meeting, based on City Council feedback and comments as well as public comment, the City Council did provide direction for the staff to include clarifying language to the policy. Also, look at best practices for enterprise fund debt issuance and also develop the criteria to utilize general fund resources. Specifically, what criteria do we want to put in place as well as if general fund money is used for other funding sources, terminology on being an interfund loan. So the next slide, please. The first thing that staff did look at, we did look at financial policies and best practices. I did enlist the help of Mark Walsh, who's the city CPA that we utilize on retainer. And what we did is we did do a review of debt issuance and financial policies. We looked at these policies from other agencies. We looked at the other agencies indirectly in this valley as well as elsewhere, things that were similar size than ours and also larger entities. So we ended up looking at eight different cities as well as three different counties, and the counties. You know, provided some great information as well for their for their debt issuance policies. In addition, we did look at the Government Finance Officers Association or GFOWA at their best practices. And then we also looked at the California Debt and Advisory Investment Advisory Committee or CDIAC. And looking at all of those different entities, our findings were that there's no financial policy specifically address the utilization of general obligation bond proceeds for enterprise fund assets. And I know we had mentioned this in previous meetings that we did initially when we started looking at this, we looked at what our financial policies stated in them as far as debt issuance. Everything related to debt issuance, after talking to Bond Council, our city attorney, as well as our municipal finance advisor, does allow us to issue go bond debt for enterprise enterprise funds. But we're really looking to see if there's any other specific policies regarding that, whether it was appropriate or not appropriate, and we could not find any policies. Next slide. So based on that information, we did, in working with the city CPA, we did feel there were, there's definitely room for some improvement in our financial policies as it specifically relates to capital improvement projects. So based on the information that we reviewed, the staff does recommend the following changes to the financial policies, which are all provided to the City Council in the staff report in red line force course in red line version. So the first is addition of policy language specifically for interfund loans. And so this is updating specifically section three, C six A, which is under Capital Improvement Program. Updating section three, C seven, which is also under the Capital Improvement Program section of the policy. And then we actually added an entire new section, which is known as section three K, which specifically talks about interfund loans. The other thing that we did is we are recommending the addition of clarifying language to section three C, and that's for the Capital Improvement Program. And you'll note in there, and this was one of the public comments, was just having the differentiation between the terminology of funding and financing. It added some a little more clarifying language in there. So there weren't any large policy updates, but it just added some more large or some clarifying information. The other thing that we are making the recommendation is addition of the Funding Capital Improvement Section within section three C. So that's now noted as section three, C ten. And what that is, is that is, we looked at Leaky California Cities, different GFOWA resources that really did talk about what are the, what are the most common funding mechanisms that are out there to to fund capital improvement programs? Doesn't mean that we're limited to these, but we wanted to memorialize what those funding mechanisms are that are available to City Council. So those are memorialized in that that new section number ten. And then that last item that we are making the recommendation for, which we touched on at their February eighth meeting, it's an administrative update just to remain compliant with GASP statement number ninety eight. And GASP is the Government Accounting Standards Board. And what that is, it's changing the name from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report to the Annual Comprehensive Comprehensive Financial Report. The reason for the change is there were, there was some, there was some concerns that were brought in front of the GASP board regarding the terminology, the acronym for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that are derogatory. And so just when it, when it was said, the acronym did sound like it was a derogatory term. The GASP board did did recognize that, and that's why we have changed to the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. Next slide. So as stated earlier, there are two different things in front of council tonight. So the first item is for council consideration is adopting the recommended changes to the financial policy. And then the second portion of this, which I'll take notes on this first, and then I will turn it back to City Council for for any other discussion on the policy itself that's in front of the council. But we do have some other policy considerations. Right now, what we've identified, but we do want to get City Council feedback. If there's anything else you would like staff to look at and bring back. One is general fund reserve levels. Right now, council has an adopted policy of thirty percent. And so we we do, we have heard, and we do want to take that into consideration and potentially bring up other recommendations back to City Council based on best practices as well as what other agencies are doing in our area and really look at some of the comparatives on that. The other identified policy and reading through some of the other policies that that both Mark and I had, Mark Walsh and I had gone through was use of one time revenues. So very specific guidelines, policy guidelines for the council and for the staff regarding use of those one time revenues. Use of fund balance and excess of established reserves. I did see several policies out there where at the end of the fiscal year, once the audit of financials are completed, council, some councils did have specific policies in place for what to do with those funds after the audit and financials are completed to make sure that we are using our resources that are coming in, but also, you know, being very mindful of reserve levels. Two other items that council members have expressed interest in was capital facilities and improvement policies as well as additional capital improvement program policies, more than what's identified right now inside of the the financial policies. And I do want to note the last two items, they will either be working really closely in connection with Public Works Department, or they may be considered a separate policy initially initiated through Public Works. We know both CIP as well as financial side of things, they work very closely together. So we, we do want to look at where where the policies are best housed, but we also don't want to lose sight of the importance of maybe shoring up some of those policies. So the next slide. So again, the council action tonight is we're making the recommendation of the approval of revision number three to financial policy. And in addition, I'm just looking for council feedback and direction on any other policy considerations to be brought back at a later time. And with that, I will hand it back over to Mayor Elfr.
Thank you, and thank you for this really detailed work here. So we're looking at two, two aspects. One is is the the work on this policy and then and then direction in terms of looking at the other policies. Is there any initial council comment here? I think if we separate the two and perhaps have a discussion on the specific work here done and then circle back on on what we want to do moving forward. Any council comment on on. Looking at this specific policy and the updates coming through. I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Well, first, I just want to. Thank everyone who worked on. These policy change recommendations in the staff report. This is really outstanding work and very helpful to me in thinking about. How we're doing, what we're doing, and what can be improved. I have one small change to propose, and this is in. See, under the Capital Improvement Program. At. Number five. I would modify the second sentence in that. Paragraph to read. It should also identify which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. I my own sense is that there's no gain from characterizing the degree of difficulty. But. Really, the the point is what we expect to see. In the capital improvement budget. And and I think the substantive change here that. The budget should show which capital needs will be funded, when they will be funded, and from what resource is really important. So I'd like to tighten that up to focus on the substance. Thank you.
Councilmember Hardy. I'm sorry, Mr. McCann.
I think we're on the same point there, Mr. Mayor. Just so everybody's on the same page, literally, I think Mr. Hardy was speaking to page five of twenty one in the red line administrative policy. Section. C Capital Improvement, number five. Do I have that correct, Councilmember Hardy?
Yes, that's exactly right. Thank you.
And then would you be so kind as to repeat what you recommend that that say? You're muted, sorry.
That doesn't work very well, does it? No. I suppose that the second sentence read, it should also identify which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. And I would be happy to. Put that in an email if that were the. If the council likes to make that change, and that would be helpful to the staff. I've got it written in my notes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Jen.
Thank you. If council wishes to adopt the proposed revision as part of the policy, and it can amend the resolution or the policy accordingly with that change. But to clarify, would you like the second sentence to be replaced entirely with what you stated, or would you like that? Provision added and then keep the remainder of that sentence? I'm sorry, actually, I'm good. I think it's in its entirety. So. We are good. Thank you.
Any other council input on that point? And then I'll I'd see Councilmember Hall. Councilmember Hall is. Were you making comment about this point or or?
No, no, I was just going to concur with that point, but I had some other comments. I'll defer to Councilmember Itto.
I was just, I agree with that. I think it's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe there's support for that. Any objection or further discussion on that point? And I'm seeing none, and we'll open it for public comment here in a in a few minutes. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Metz. Great updates to the policy. I believe there's probably a number of folks involved in it. Really appreciate the work. I think it's. Much, much better. I'm actually in that same Capital Improvement Program section, right in the middle of page five of twenty one, item C. I'm looking at item C two, and I'm just curious if. Here, or perhaps it's later with working with Public Works on the rest of the capital improvement items. We could develop a. Project phase methodology that helps us understand. The level of confidence we have in the project estimate. Obviously, early on, it's basically a ballpark as we move through some. Some phase methodology that we can all agree to. When we get to execution or a bids in and the project's initiated, then we we've gone from whatever, you know, ten percent level of confidence in the number to ninety or ninety five percent level of confidence. And maybe there's a couple of other phases in there, pre-bid, bid, et cetera, that we might be able to build in. I also had.
Councilmember Hall, I'm seeing Mr. McCann with a hand up, maybe a clarification on this point, and then we'll go back to your next point.
Okay.
Sure, sure. I think I think that Mr. Rincon can probably give you a quick answer. There's a a standard practice in capital project design. You know, it's tied to percentage, twenty five percent design, thirty five, forty, sixty, ninety, et cetera. Mark, can you explain that so that we can understand exactly how that works and how that gives you confidence in estimating?
Sure. During budgeting and early on before the project's just conceptual, we kind of put a cost estimate together. It's not really a cost, it's a budgetary number more than anything else. And and it's a level of effort, basically, you know, roughly, this is how much it's going to cost. It could be, you know. Plus fifty percent. It's just that's the confidence level at that point. As we continue to develop, you know, the project and it works through the design phases, the engineer will start to produce a thirty percent, you know. Design level cost estimate and work from there up to the bid phase where we have an engineer's estimate that goes out. And that's just based on, you know, recent record. And of course, the the problem we're having right now is is the inflation. We just can't keep up with with the cost estimates, you know, they come in and they surprise us that they're much higher than than the engineer's estimate.
Thank you very much. I figured that there was a probably, you know, several different options for establishing that than I was really. Deferring to you on whatever whatever your preference is. I just think it'd be helpful in looking at estimates. I just had a follow up for Dr. Metz on C ten, Funding Capital Improvements, ten A, Pay as You Go. First of all, thank you for the the extensive list here. I think it's it's fantastic. The pay as you go is is this envisioned perhaps as a separate fund? And the reason. What's motivating my question is the the need for. Capital reserves. Before COVID, staff recommended that council establish, you know, set aside a million bucks or two million bucks in a variety of different civic and street programs. We haven't done that. And I'm thinking that perhaps that bucket could be something that's similar to a pay as you go, or it could be used for routine maintenance items or smaller capital projects that. Public Works can can just start working off their lists so long as they understand there's a bucket here that's available for that sort of smaller task discretionary sort of funding as they go. Is that a separate fund like that that could be set up?
Don't tell our auditors this, but yes, they're very critical of how many funds we have right now. Typically, right now, through the budgetary process is we do have some pay as you go cash paid, cash paid projects. And what we've done in the past is if it's something that's general fund supported, specifically street, stormwater, any civic project, we transfer the money from the general fund operating budget, and we transfer it right into the CIP fund. So we actually have four different CIP funds. We have one for civic, streets, water, wastewater. So we do set aside those specifics. But one of the items where, you know, for potential further consideration is capital facilities. But one of the items where, you know, for potential further consideration is capital facilities and improvement policies, and maybe setting up more of a fund that's that's basically is is taking into depreciation of the asset. If it's depreciating at $200,000 a year, we put that right into a specific fund for that. So we can definitely set it up that way. And I have seen some policies. But again, luckily, our auditors are not on the line today, so they can't get upset about that many more funds.
That that sounds terrific. Thank you. I just had another comment or two. I I know our auditors don't like funds, but I think it's it's difficult to keep everything in one large bucket like the general fund and be able to track it. It help. It's difficult for you know, a a standard reader to understand what's happening and for, I think, the council, frankly, and perhaps even the public to understand some of the money movement. You do a great job tracking what you have, and certainly today's budget report that we'll look at a little bit later helps helps us navigate that. But I was thinking, even there, if we had a separate fund that could be set up that was essentially an emergency reserve or a revenue stabilization bucket for the council instead of, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about, well, what's our reserve level? What's our reserve? Well, maybe what we do is look at the general fund as what do we need to run the city on sort of a stabilized level. And then we have a bucket set up in case we have unforeseen emergencies, if we have firestorms, if we have whatever it happens to be, a recession, et cetera. At least there's something set aside two, three, four months equivalent revenue that's available for us to draw on should we hit a flat patch like that. And that way, we don't have to go back through the entire budget and start chopping and whacking stuff apart. I think that becomes very cumbersome. And to provide a little bit more clarity, similarly, there's there's noise in the data in the general fund around these nonrecurring revenue and nonrecurring expense items. And I loved the list that you put together. I think it's a it's a great list to come back to. But, you know, my my wish would be that we extract nonrecurring revenue and expense items from the general fund net position calculation. So we look at net position as a stabilized operating profile. What does it normally typically look like? Every once in a while, we get a lump sum in that's nonrecurring. It's a one-time revenue, and there should be some bucket or some some way of identifying what that is. And same thing with one-off expenses, which we have routinely, but they're nonrecurring. So we can extract some of that noise and say, what do we really have flowing in? What's typically flowing out? And then we have these adjustment buckets over here. It might help provide more clarity to us. I would love to see some some policy around that.
Thank you. If I may just jump in for a moment, just in terms of keeping things on track here, if we look at this this resolution as we as we have it, and then our next section of this is talking about looking relooking at these policies coming up. So thank you. I think I think that those ideas and suggestions are really welcome. I just want to make sure when we get to the next section that those are memorialized. So if if folks are okay in terms of where we are, I'm seeing Councilmember Shoto.
Oh, I I think I jumped ahead of you, but I'm going to move approval of the resolution if that's where you were going.
I think that's where we are. I just need to make sure that we've opened this to public comment. So I'll look to our city clerk.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. So I want to just make one comment here. I I see Councilmember or Vice Mayor Dorian, and then but I just want to make sure in terms of our messaging to the public that, you know, whether our auditors are on or not, you know, we always want to be consistent with best practice. I just want make sure that our our messaging to the public is is that's our way of moving forward at all times. So I'm seeing Council or Vice Mayor Doring, and then I'll circle back to Councilmember Shoto in terms of a motion. I thank you, Mayor. Just an inquiry of Councilmember Hardy. I I need a little bit more clarification on the point you're making about C five, capital improvement program. So I think it's a good addition to identify the project. I just, maybe I don't have clarity and don't have a full understanding of what this paragraph is meant to to do. But I I want to make sure it does not exclude those projects that we have identified, but we have no no idea where the funding is going to be or when it's going to be. But we know there's a project that's needed. I don't want I don't want to exclude that by the language, and maybe it doesn't. Maybe it does. I just want to make sure that we're we're identifying all projects, even if we have not been able to identify the funding or the timing so so that they're on the radar list. And that that's my point there. And maybe that's what you're getting at also. Councilmember Hardy, some clarification?
I I really was not trying to change the substance of that paragraph at all, but rather to tighten up the wording. So whether you support my change or not, this paragraph calls for the budget to identify. That's the word I'm proposing to use, but it's the same either way. Right now, it says it should also make this difficult decision regarding which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. I'm proposing that it read, it should also identify which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. So I think Vice Mayor Doring, you've identified a concern that is untouched by the change that I proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to look to Ms. Jen. She had a maybe a clarification.
Um, just to confirm that, if council wished to make that change to the second sentence. And again, to clarify, it would be page five of policy P F I dash 0016. And it would be C five, sentence two. And the proposed amendment would be to would be replace in its entirety to read. It should also identify which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. That would need to be part of the proposed motion. If council wish.
Thank you. And and I I see you, Councilmember Hall, circle right to you. But I I want to just in mention in what Vice Mayor Doring brought up. One of the things a former city manager, Mark Press, which really helped us understand was we can move for forward, getting projects shovel ready. And often that helps get the funding if a funder sees that we've done the work in prepping the project. I believe that's where Vice Mayor Doring is coming from. But as Councilmember Hardy says, his suggestions don't don't interfere with that at all. So am I clear in that?
Well, my suggestion simply doesn't change the substance of the additional policy language here with respect to identifying which capital needs the agency will fund, when it will fund them, and from what resource. So my change doesn't simply doesn't address the concern that you and Vice Mayor Doring may share, if I understand your comments correctly. It it doesn't add or subtract anything related to that concern.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Can I jump in for one one second? I was just thinking that actually the language in that is a little weird. It's it's reads a capital improvement budget further up under C one. It's there's a whole separate note that says the CIP is really not a budget. It's it's a list of things that is used for planning. So I know that we have just published our our first CIP in years. Thank you, Director Rincon and Dr. Metz, where where the CIP is actually sized to resources and our our ability to deliver. So that's that's a wonderful improvement. And somewhere in here, I don't know if it was this document or or later, when we'll talk about the budget, there's a reference to a much broader comprehensive list that is not really the five-year CIP. It's 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 sort of, here's this other wish list that we're we're all aware of that of of items that have been identified in in reports, commissions, task forces, et cetera, in which I think we looked at as part of our budget workshop. And the last I recall that was up around 140 or 150 million dollars. And I think council had some additional comments. So that list, I think, is a list where we have a project identified and maybe maybe funding, maybe not at all. But those long items haven't yet transferred to perhaps a five-year CIP where things are going to be a little bit more focused on are we actually able to deliver or not? And that will be really up to to Director Rincon and his team to to determine. And then at which point, I think, some of this language would would kick back in that is CIP specific. So maybe to to Dr. Metz's point earlier about Public Works and finance working together on those other two CIP items at some point down the road here in terms of policy, that gets fleshed out a little bit better in terms of what actually goes on each one of these lists that anyway, I'm just trying to help unbundle.
Excellent points. Thank you. So with that, do we feel we have clarity to move forward and and consensus to move forward with the language? Okay, I think we're looking pretty good. Ms. Jen?
I did hear a motion that was earlier, and I believe that was as is.
The it was as it. So we need to talk about
Now, the motion that I'm going to make is to approve the attached resolution for the financial policy and include Councilmember Hardy's revision. I'm happy to say it if you want me to say it. No, all right, as previously stated, by Ms. Jen. Thank you.
And I'm seeing Mr. McCann.
I'll I'll second that.
If just a moment, I'm seeing Mr. McCann, just wondering if there's some clarification that needs to happen from the city manager.
Sorry, go go ahead. Go ahead with your second. I I just have a comment before you go.
Okay, I'll I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a second, and then Mr. McCann.
I just wanted to make sure April that the direction that we have, we have a motion relative to the resolution and the policies. And we also have direction to return to council at a future date for a discussion item that would identify sort of the universe of other financial policies to review, refine. So we're not taking action on that tonight, but we do have direction to return for that discussion. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, very good. And I'll just, and I see Councilmember Hardy, I just want to make clear that I think everybody will have input on those other items. And just as we have that discussion, that will be the time to really bring in the specifics. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Yes, thank you, Mary. It was my understanding from the from your lead in to this discussion that we were going to focus on the recommended changes. Take action there and then discuss what it is we would like brought back with respect to the other policies. So I'm if
Yes, I I can.
I want to make comments now, but if I'm right, then then I'm ready to vote.
So I'll look to Mr. McCann. My thought was to to make this vote. And then we have a a conversation in terms of direction on those other policies. Does that sound appropriate? Or should we just have that conversation and look at that list in conjunction with this? I just didn't want to get the items tangled up.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So our staff report does say to adopt the resolution, provide additional direction in regards to other policy considerations to be brought back to council for consideration. So you're correct, Mr. Hardy. I was just noting that we will be bringing it back. So if you don't have your list of of financial policies that you're interested in, tonight's like the only opportunity. If you have some areas that you are interested in, let us know, and we'll we'll get working on it. When we come back, we'll have some work on that. But we'll have the whole bundle of policies for you to have a conversation about, provides an input, direction, and then we'll have a subsequent discussion where we will return with some recommended language changes. So a couple of different opportunities to bite at this particular apple.
Councilmember Hardy, are you comfortable with that? Do you want to put some comment in here?
I I think that discussion should follow the roll call as suggested by the staff report, and I'm I'm good with.
Okay, very good. So we'll do the roll call, and then we'll move back to that. Cindy, the mute, please.
Councilor Shito?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Elsver?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everybody, for the focus on that. And Dr. Metz, excellent work. Really appreciate it. And our finance team really appreciate it. So if if you could put back up that list that we were looking at a little bit earlier of of potential policies to look at, and we can start there and and sort of see where the discussion goes. I think we don't want to get too in-depth. We'll all have different thoughts here, but if if we look at the general places we want to approach.
Yes, Cindy, can you allow me to share my screen? Perfect. So hopefully, everyone can see the screen. So these are the items that we had identified based on what I've been hearing council discussions regarding some of the financial policies, in particular, the general fund reserve levels, as well as other things that, as I've been going through other financial policies, maybe tightening up some language on use of one-time revenues, use of fund balance in excess of the established reserves, capital facilities and improvement policies. And again, I do want to, I do want to note, you know, make a make a comment on Mayor Elsver's comments before, everything that we do is in accordance with good, sound financial policies. I just know sometimes our auditors don't like the amount of funds that we have. It doesn't mean that we're doing anything wrong by the amount of funds that we have. It just means we have several pockets of money for a little bit of everything. And then also looking at capital improvement program policies. Based on some of the discussion earlier tonight, I do, I have taken notes on is maybe making a determination on how to establish net position on which numbers you use. Because right now, for net position, how you get the percentage or the the your unrestricted fund balance is you take your whatever is left in the fund balance, and you divide it by your expenses for the year. And that's what gets your, that's what gets you your percentage. And so maybe adding some different language or memorializing what metrics we use in determining that position, as well as I did hear some of the feedback on updating to potentially include other language for capital projects, so not necessarily part of the established five-year CIP plan, but also maybe memorialize that we do keep an ongoing 30-year list, whether it's funded or not funded. We don't want to lose sight of some of those important things. So based on that, I would love any other council feedback and direction. And also would like to, you know, ask council feedback on if they would like to establish a working group of one or two council members. Or if we want to data dump ideas with me, I can work with Mandy Kellogg, and we'll bring bring it back at a later date for future discussion.
I'm going to open it to council just a moment. I had a few thoughts. First, I think that Councilmember Hall in in some of his comments earlier was finding a really good way of of defining some of the issues and separations. As I was looking at it, it was, you know, how do we define the difference between our reserves and our unrestricted general fund? And then that will help us determine how to, you know, where we are. I think Councilmember Hall had some some good suggestions about how to really look at that. My my thought is looking towards some type of a special meeting where when we come back with these policies, we're we're really singularly focused on these financial policies because of the of the the nuances and the sort of the interconnectedness of them may take some special focus. That's my thought as as we all put our ideas in, and perhaps, you know, our finance team helps lay out what a special meeting Uh, and perhaps, you know, our finance team, uh, helps lay out what a special meeting talking about these different policies. Uh, that's just a, a thought that I'm having right now because it's so critical. Um, that it, you know, if we're all in that same headspace together, I think we'll be able to find some, some really good ways to balance things. Any council comment here? Councilmember Hall and then Councilmember.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your, your comments earlier. Um, and thank you, Dr. Mitz, for your, your openness to a variety of different ideas and, and other ways of going, going about this. Uh, I like the idea of having a, a special session on it. I think that'd be helpful. Um, I think once Dr. Mitz has a chance to sort of compile and her and her whole team to compile, um, perhaps other, uh, thoughts or processes here, then maybe all that comes back to, uh, uh, either to a, a subcommittee group, like you've said, or, uh, this entire group in a special session where we, uh, where we can really focus on those changes together. So I, I like that. I think there's a, a, a number of ways of, uh, of tackling all of these things. I know, um, I've written language on, uh, on quite a bit of it. Um, including use of one-time revenues, our reserve levels, not just establishing a level, but thinking about how do we actually manage that level that makes it really clear for all of us in our decision-making and then also um, use of fund balance in excess of established reserves. I, I like that idea a lot. I view that as part of sort of a one-time revenue uh, policy. And then similarly, on the capital facilities improvement side, um, I think having that thirty-year project list is, is very, very important in that whether it's funded or not. And then, uh, obviously I think that and the, the last item here, CIP policies both will help feed into this work that she's, uh, identified as part of this long-term uh, financial plan going forward. How, how do we fund these things and how do we get it done? What transfers off the big list onto a CIP list and then which, which of those elements are actually funded? Anyway, so I don't know the best way forward. Um, but I think there's, there's quite a bit here and I like the, uh, the initial take on it that she's, she's got, I think it's terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Well, I, I, I certainly do want to, um, address the subject of general fund reserve levels at the contemplated future meeting and, um, I have to say that I'm not at all convinced that looking at what other communities do really, uh, gives us uh, the right sort of information. It seems to me that we will have a much better understanding of where we've been and where we might wish to be, uh, if we focus instead on our own financial history and, and specifically from my perspective, that means examining what has happened, uh, in the last several, um, uh, economic downturns where municipal revenues were, uh, affected. Uh, we have the most recent one, uh, uh, with, you know, involving, uh, principally, uh, COVID. Uh, and that, you know, that isn't necessarily over, but we certainly, uh, have data now as to, uh, you know, what, what the initial downturn looked like. And we do seem to be, uh, 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 rebounding from that in terms of revenues. So I think there's good data there. Uh, there's, um, uh, plenty of information about how the city was affected financially by the Great Recession and it, that being, uh, such a big event, it seems to me it would be useful to go back one, uh, downturn earlier, uh, uh, to get a perspective. And I think if we have data from, from three, uh, cycles, um, then, then we have some perspective with which to go forward. But if all we do is look at, you know, what other communities' reserve policies are and we don't understand how the recessions and downturns played out in those communities, we don't really know, um, whether those are good policies to emulate or not. Uh, so those are my thoughts on that. And that's what I'd like to see come back. Thank you.
And I'm seeing, uh, Vice Mayor Doring and then Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up with excellent comments by Councilmember Hardy. Um, I do, I do agree with the proposition that it, it's really not very useful ultimately to look to other communities to establish our own reserve policies. I think you know, these reserve policies in and of themselves sort of assume that we are putting aside monies for the various pots of reserves that we need. Like for example, equipment or capital improvements or facilities rehabilitation and maintenance. And so when you look at, uh, another community's reserve policy, it may be a hundred percent, a hundred percent, oh wow. But then you look, you get into the weeds, you realize maybe they don't have any reserves for equipment or very little or capital improvements. And so it's really hard to judge that. You, you couldn't really compare that apples to apples. So fundamentally, I agree that you look back right at, at, at the downturn, as Councilmember Hardy suggests, over a couple of cycles to see how that worked out. But for me, um, I think we need to look at risk going forward of other things that may not have existed, maybe, uh, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago. And I don't know, this is a question as I'm making my comments, a question for the experts on our staff, uh, Mr. McCann and Dr. Mitz and others. How do we identify risk? Is that something that council members who are not experts in risk, uh, identification do, but are there folks out there who could come into a community and say, you know, here's the size of your community, here's where you are, here's your situation with, you know, what comes to mind is fire risk, climate change risk, uh, not having a, a sufficient water supply. Those are the kinds of risks that I don't know of anybody here, maybe I, I'm wrong, but uh, has the ability, it's almost like an insurance sort of situation where they come in and manage the risk and say, here's why, here's how much money you need to set aside for these various risks. And so the question is, how do I, how do we go about identifying risk? I think if we can focus on that problem going forward, it will help us. Um, and I just don't have enough information on how other communities, uh, go through that process. I think it would be a very, uh, revealing process for us. Uh, I don't want to scare the heck out of the community, but I think we, we do need to have a better sense of, of what the risks are rather than sort of just this general notion of what the risk is. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I see addition? I have a few comments. I, I saw, uh, Councilmember Hall and then Councilmember Chito.
Thank you, Ian. Um, thank you, Vice Mayor, for your comments. I, um, th- there's lots of ways to do that, actually, and there are, you know, insurance-related type people who, who do that. Um, you know, one, one risk we, we don't talk, uh, much about here. Uh, but we should because it's tied to our climate action work. It's tied to our environmental work. Um, and that is, uh, uh, energy, uh, PG&E prices, the grid going down, right? We're already receiving, um, all kinds of emails from PG&E because they're, they're planning on PSPS events coming up this fall. And this will likely continue for years to come. And so I, I like to look at the Upper Valley as we have a very, very small community here. We should be able to uh, generate a lot of our own power using sustainable means. Um, and certainly provide and reduce risks to our wastewater treatment facilities, our power plants, et cetera. Not only in St. Plana, but for the Veterans Home, for Yountville, for Calistoga here in the Upper Valley, if we can start thinking a little bit differently about becoming much more energy self-reliant, uh, not being completely off the grid. But I think there's lots of ways to, to bolster that and make sure that we, we don't lose, uh, power. And I think you can make some very quick and easy assessments of what's the cost to us when we lose power, what sort of scramble do, do we all go through? And what does it cost to, uh, reduce that risk? So I like those ideas. Um, I'm just forgetting some other thought I had here. That's, that's it for now. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think if we, if we don't get too deep into the subjects, but just, uh, uh, putting these thoughts forward about areas of exploration, um, as we move forward, I'm seeing Councilmember Chito.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say from my perspective, I would like to see our reserve levels, that data, how it compares to a few other cities. That's helpful information for me. Because we do know, you know, we're not going to know in the weeds what there happens in their cities, but we know in general where revenue comes from. And we have to make some hard decisions moving forward in terms of what we can fund now and what we need to put in reserves. And I like to just have an idea of what's going on in a couple of other cities. That's helpful information to me along with what Councilmember Hardy brought up in terms of looking at our own information and what's happened in the past with recessions and how we've bounced back and what we've needed and where perhaps we wish we had more because we weren't able to fund staff positions and then we couldn't do important services and we're still playing catch-up from that. So all of that's good information. I just know from my perspective and making decisions, I like to have a couple benchmarks in there and would appreciate that research. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall, but I want to see if, uh, by, uh, uh, City Manager McCann has some clarification here.
Um, thank you. I, I was just going to comment on, on, uh, uh, the Vice Mayor's, um, question about risks. Uh, it is very interesting as he was speaking at first, I thought, oh my gosh, like, I don't know. Uh, there's so many. Um, but I think there are processes to do that. And I think an excellent one, uh, is just, uh, what the community has told us and what the council knows. Uh, and, and part of that is, is going through a, uh, a strategic planning session, uh, where, where you all, uh, throw things out, uh, about, uh, concerns. And so, um, uh, that, you know, goes to sort of the old style, you know, SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And if you look at that and you just start thinking, uh, you know, very broadly, I think that that can be a source of, uh, an area to identify things. So as you were talking, I was just thinking, some things that are not your normal kind of uh, item that you might include, but staffing, the ability to attract and retain staff. Uh, that's a risk, that's a threat, that's a weakness that we have. Um, uh, air quality impacts from wildfires, not even in our area, but far away, they affect us. The fact that we are, we're a, a bit more diverse than our economic base than others, but tourism and agriculture are it. And so a lot of our eggs are in the basket of, of wine and wine country and tourism. Um, uh, access and circulation, we've got, uh, limited access and circulation. Those are, those are facts, but those are, those are threats, those are weaknesses that we have. And you can go on and on, uh, with that kind of, 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 uh, thinking. That though will provide the inputs, the information for a strategy. How do we want to address this thing? How do we want to address uh, weaknesses in the community, whether it's communication or diversity or engagement, uh, with different factors of our community, social justice, equity, all of those things are things that you may not normally have on the list, but we could put them on the list and then you can develop a deliberate strategic plan to try to address those things. Which takes money, takes energy, takes goals, takes emphasis. But I think it's an excellent point. I think it would be an excellent conversation for the council to have as part of the strategic planning session. You take those and you put them together with the kind of hard, concrete infrastructure things and the other service needs. And then you've got a full package and you can identify, uh, the funding necessary and then identify which funds should go to, toward what type of service improvement and activity you want to pursue. So I think it's a really great idea.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. I thought terrific comments all the way around there. Wonderful. Um, and I just did remember, uh, when Councilmember Chito was talking, uh, what my earlier point was, uh, comparing us to other cities. One, one thing to keep in mind here in the Upper Valley is our, our revenue uh, by source, our, our TOT is fairly small compared to both Calistoga and Yountville. So they're going to have a lot more impact in a, in a downturn than we are. Uh, our most stable source, of course, is property taxes. It's our biggest chunk. Uh, actually, I think our budget, we just, we just jumped higher on sales tax. So sales tax and, and, uh, and property tax aren't going to swing as much as, uh, revenues are in, in Yountville, for instance. Um, so that's a, a blessing on, on one hand, because it means in, in a downturn, well, our, our property taxes are likely to, to provide basically a floor for us. Uh, on the other hand, when, when inflation is ripping like it is right now, our, our revenue stream really is property taxes, which are just going to go up three or four percent. And we know inflation is moving at, at eight, nine, 10%, twice or three times that, that pace right now. So it becomes also an opportunity for us. How do we look at closing that gap in the future? So that, that was my only comment there. Thank you.
Thank you. All, all excellent input. And I think part of a discussion that I do believe needs to be a full council special meeting. I, you know, perhaps, uh, from that, a subcommittee could peel off. But I do think it needs to be a full council discussion. I see the value in both looking at our town specifically, our specific history, but also the idea of benchmarking of seeing ourselves in context. Um, you know, it's a silly little example is if I never saw another human being, I might think I'm the tallest person in the world. But when I see myself in relation to other people, I know sort of where I, I stand. So I think a combination would be excellent of looking, looking at us specifically and then in context. And that's part of the larger package of these financial, uh, uh, policies is so important to get inside of. So if, if we're okay with where we are in the conversation, um, I do think I'm going to need to, I open this part of the conversation, the public comment, just to see if there's any comment on this. Um, because it was, we sort of separated it. I'll just look to our city clerk.
There are no hands raised.
So no hands raised. Okay. So we'll bring it back to the council. If we're all agreed that we want to see these come forward as, as Mr. McCann says, a number of bites at this apple. So anybody that has input where this wants to go, uh, please submit it, uh, and then we will package this and bring it back. And my suggestion of a, of a, of a, of a special meeting, I just think it's going to take that kind of attention. Uh, so, uh, with that, Mr. McCann, do you feel like you have direction?
Yeah, yes, I, I think so. A really, uh, exciting conversation. So thank you very much, uh, for that. Thank you, April, for the good work, uh, uh, on the financial policies, uh, to date. Uh, I will speak with April, uh, and with our new city manager uh, about this and suggest to, uh, Mr. Canelo that, uh, he have a conversation with the mayor and vice mayor about how best to bring this forward. Cause I do think a special meeting, uh, would be the appropriate, uh, setting. I do think there's some advantage, uh, to having a, a broader topic or broader agenda that might be looking at some strategic planning as well. So uh, we can have the things aligned, but we'll figure that out. Uh, I think we've got a, a really good, uh, input and direction. So thank you.
Very good. We'll move, oh, I'm seeing, uh, Vice Mayor Doring.
Just, thank you. Just one other comment before we move on. You know, I, I do think, I agree with Councilmember Chito that no, benchmarking is a good idea. I, I'm not, uh, intending to dismiss that. I think most people know me, know that I typ- I typically tend to do that. Uh, and I've done that over the course of eight years on all, a, a whole host of a variety of issues in terms of how we compare to Yountville and, and Calistoga. And obviously I'm very familiar with Calistoga. So even if I don't express that publicly, I have a good internal sense of what's going on in this city or where I am. So I, I just wanted to make sure that we caution when we do benchmarking that we have a fair comparison. It, all information is good information. So I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and before we move to our next item here, I just want to mention, uh, and we'll circle back on this at the end of the meeting, but I, I, I don't want folks to forget who may be on this. This will be, uh, Mr. McCann's last meeting with us and, uh, want to be sure to, uh, say thank you properly to him. We'll do that at the end of the meeting, but I just wanted to make that note. Uh, so anybody who's on the meeting, uh, will hopefully stick around, uh, as we, uh, get to the, to end and able to really, uh, express our gratitude. Um, so with that, then we will move, uh, to, um, item nine point two. This is consideration proposed approval of the following resolutions related to the Napa Valley College Tenant Improvement, C two-two dash zero, 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 one. I'll look to our, uh, city attorney. Am I to read this entire list here? I'll look to our uh city attorney. Am I to read this entire list here?
It would be fine to um read the resolutions.
The resolutions, um, so.
So, so I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, when we have an action to adopt resolution number one, for instance, we would read the title of that resolution at that time.
Okay.
You need not read it at this point.
Okay, very good. So we have a number of resolutions relating to the Napa Valley College tenant improvements. See twenty-two dash zero, 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 one. And this was prepared by Priya Nixon, our assistant to the city manager. And I don't know if uh Ms. Nixon or Mr. McCann uh is going to lead us into.
I think we're, yeah, I think we're both gonna um bring this forward. I'd just like to say a few things. One, uh, I, I want to thank Priya uh in particular for really good work. Uh, this is work that uh in her capacity as assistant to the city manager. She's really a, a utility player and she gets exposed to all sorts of things that frequently she uh has not had experience working on. And so uh facility um uh agreement, a lease, uh, the various design work, uh, the contract work, all of this uh uh is uh, work that really was new to her. I think she's done a remarkable job to try to herd all of these cats together. Uh, and to work with uh different staff to bring it forward. So I thank Priya for her good work and congratulate her on that. Um, this is an exciting project. It's one that the council has been quite interested in. Uh, and there, it's been a bumpy uh road uh to get to this point. A lot of complications, a lot of things outside of our control. Um, uh, some surprises, but I think at the end of the day, uh, a good um uh opportunity for the city, certainly for the staff and for the service that we can provide to the community. So this is not the final step. We've got a lot more to do, but this is an important step to allow us to move forward. Um, while there are uh costs involved here, uh, you'll see in our budget that we've identified appropriate uh funding mechanisms for those costs. And we think uh with all things considered, that this is an appropriate uh measure for us to take and an appropriate action for us to take. So I'd like Priya to just give us a quick summary of the um five items that we have before you. Uh, we're not going to go into great detail on them. I know you're familiar with the things. If you do have questions, though, we'd be happy to uh go into whatever detail you desire. So Priya, thank you again. And if you tell us about these five, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, Mr. McCann, thank you for providing those introductory comments and for those kind words. I appreciate your leadership as well. So I'd really like to thank everyone who has helped us get to this point. Um, this item is really a culmination of actions, as Mr. McCann stated, for the city to move forward with the tenant improvements for this, for the move to the Napa Valley College. And I do have to say that this is probably one of the longest titles for a staff report that I've written. And I think um just to echo what Mr. McCann said, that um this project has been a little bit more complicated than anticipated. And, you know, we have found that as applicable to all of the projects here that costs have escalated. Um, however, we have reviewed diligently and evaluated the proposed contracts and believe that moving forward will uh allow the city to make the necessary tenant improvements. So um I have provided a detailed staff report that has broken down the five different resolutions, and I'm just going to very briefly go over what they are. Um, so the first one is for uh the tenant improvement work, which will be done by the general contractor. So we did have um a bid opening um occur on June fifteenth and we received four bids for that. And we are recommending uh approval of award to Murray Building, Inc. The second component and a very critical component for this project includes the IT improvements um that need to happen to bring uh the IT up to meet the operational needs of both the city administration and also the police department. So this includes some new cabling, network build out and then relocation services. And we have uh been utilizing Marin IT and Marin IT has submitted a proposal for this component. And then another component that's very important for the police department is the lease of a portable locker room unit. And we have found a, uh, we have been working with a J P A that has uh provided an opportunity for us to get something that will meet the security needs for a portable unit for the police department. And then um I'll just say as a reminder, um, this is actually a project that's under the umbrella of the Division of State Architect. And we have an architect of record and we've been working with a construction management firm that's helped us get the project to this point. And we need um construction administration support from the architect of record. And then construction management support, which is typical for any capital project. Um, and this uh will be done with, uh, we're proposing with Greystone West. Um, they are a C M firm who is very familiar with St. Helena and both the A O R and the C M firm uh, I know the D S A very well. Um, so I just went over to the college yesterday. I go over quite a bit, um, as you can imagine. And I just would like to say that this will be a fantastic home for the city staff. And we are all very excited about this. It truly will be a community hub and we look forward to welcoming everyone. And I'd like to thank the college for their continued partnership and assistance as we get ready to move forward with the next step. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, I may uh need a little uh additional clarification as we go here. Are there initial uh council comments input here at this point? I'm seeing Councilmember Chateau.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this, Priya. Good work. I do agree that we need to do this. The costs are just outstanding. I mean, really extraordinary when you look at that total number. And we know that we need to have a good, safe place, not only for all of our city staff, but all of the extra costs for our police department and safety are so important. I just, when I'm looking at this number and thinking about how we only have a five-year lease with the two years, I want to encourage us to keep moving forward with conversations either to purchase the building or to extend that lease. Because this amount of cost to me does not make sense unless we have that lease extend out farther than what we currently have. So I am in support of all of these. And of course, want to hear public comment before making my final determination. Um, but want to raise that because I think it's really important that we get more, that we recognize this kind of investment that our city is making in this very important space for our community. And I agree with Priya, it can be such an asset to our community for community space and everything that can happen there. Um, and we need to make sure that we really get the value out of everything that we're investing.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to uh concur with uh Councilmember Chateau. I think it's the, the real question behind, behind this. Priya, thank you for all your work. Um, I know that the, the costs aren't, aren't you personally? Uh, it's just the, the nature of this type of work and also our environment today. But, you know, we're up uh four and a half times uh over the original estimate just one year ago. It's, it's quite a change. So um, but I think Councilmember Chateau has hit the nail on the head. Um, what are we doing long-term for our, our home? I think this is going to be a wonderful setup. It takes us a long time to make decisions in this space with public assets and a long time to make changes to wherever we're going next. So uh, my, my personal preference, of course, is let's continue to work with, with the college on uh acquiring this space if possible, or extending the lease out for a much, much longer term. Um, but we need to look at uh what's, what's our, our long-term uh play here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing Councilmember Hardy.
Thank you. Um, I just have a, a initially a question for um, staff regarding the fiscal impact of approval of the five resolutions. Unless I'm uh bad at my own math, the total uh in that part of the staff report titled fiscal impact uh does not include the um authorization uh of uh ten percent uh change orders uh on on the uh general contract. So um my own sort of intuitive response to looking at the resolutions individually is to want to add uh that ten percent because the resolution authorizes it. But uh uh, my mind and ears are both open. Thank you.
Is there any clarification from staff on that point?
So if I can just chime in here, I'll look to April. I know the resolution certainly, to your point, Councilmember Hardy does call out the ten percent. April, do you have any comments on that, that part of the fiscal impact? Because I believe it is part of the overall project budget. Is that correct?
It is. The ten percent is included in the overall project budget. Um, so as we noted in the, the staff report that's coming next for the, but for the budget increase, that does include the ten percent contingency if necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, additional council comment here. Uh, I'm certainly uh supportive of this moving forward. The costs are uh, are uh attention-getting, but I believe we need to move this forward. I just want to take a moment to thank uh Vice Mayor Doring for his work on this and others uh who helped really put this together. It's a challenge. I agree with uh Councilmember Hall looking towards uh what we can do uh long-term. Uh, this, this is a wonderful opportunity. It's, the site is a wonderful site and also the opportunity to work with our partners, Napa Valley College. And this was also an incredible asset during the pandemic, working with the hospital, et cetera. So I, I just think and, and the sooner we can get our staff into this wonderful space, uh, that's the goal here is if we can, if we can make this transition so that everybody's got a workspace that they're proud of and, and works well. Um, just two other uh comments. It also, that, that proximity to the river and that special area uh that's also near the community forest, but looking at uh giving us an eye towards restoration of habitat in that area. Um, we've learned that things like beaver habitat build fire resiliency. Uh, it creates a lushness which helps with other habitats. So just having our, our city administration close to that area, I think will bring attention to that. And then something Councilmember Chateau brought up recently about our, our efforts towards diversity, equity and inclusion and looking at the true heritage of Napa Valley and St. Helena with the Chinese heritage, the Latino heritage, also looking at our indigenous heritage. And this place, this spot by the river was and is such an important part of the indigenous culture here that I think that um as we move our city administration there, attention's going to just naturally come to these things. And I see we'll, I think we'll see a fruition in that area as well. So I'm very supportive of this. Um, and want to see it happen as soon as we can make it happen. I'm seeing Vice Mayor Doring and then I'll open it to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, for your support. Um, just one question for staff with respect to the, the construction contract and the, the the facility that's used for the locker rooms and showers for the police department. I want to make sure that that uh is protected. Can someone speak to that? Is it, is it going to be enclosed by a wall or a fence or something? Because I noticed, uh, well, I noticed some, some discussion in, in some of the documents about uh the, the materials that it's constructed with. And it seems to me that it's vulnerable, uh, if it's not enclosed or protected in some form or fashion. Uh, so that's one thing. I don't, I don't know if anybody could speak to that. Um, it may be an add-on on, in, with the uh, the contractor there who's, who's going to be delivering that facility, the construction trailer. That, that would be something very important for me to, to ensure that we have the protection of folks using that facility. The point is well-taken with respect to the escalation of costs. Absolutely mind-numbing. Um. I do think I want to be sensitive to uh the negotiators on behalf of the uh Napa Valley College. As you recall, uh, this, this project started on a high and it died suddenly because of a public outcry amongst many and a lot of resistance. Even to get the project on, on the ground. So those negotiations stalled for several months and we got this project back online. Uh, originally it wasn't even going to be a bidder lease. The two years was not presented. I do agree that in order to get the value out of uh the monies we're expanding, we, we definitely need to uh engage with the college uh folks. Uh, you know, in short order, but also be s- sensitive to the political reality that's going on with respect to the use of the college and its own mission. So we have to kind of balance that out. Um, I'd be happy to continue with, with that, that dialogue and work with another council member on that. Um, I do think freeing up the space at Railroad Avenue and frankly, ultimately Main Street is a big win for us. Those are two assets uh that the city has that are obviously underutilized. And so it, it almost is a jumpstart for both of those railroad, railroad and Main Street to say, okay. You know, I know the, 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 the police movement will be a little slower with respect to dispatch, but it would be nice to just demolish what's on Main Street and have a fresh look at that. And then also really look hard at uh what uses we can make with railroad. And until we make the move, we really can't commit to either one of those. So I think it's a really uh important milestone for the city. But I'd be happy to continue to work with the college and um, the idea is to become a good partner over time, pay our bills, work with the college. Um, have a lot of interaction with the college in terms of the, the partnerships that we can develop over time, in terms of what their mission is and what our mission is. And I agree with Council, uh, Councilmember Hall. It would be a nice property to be, to acquire over time. One of the things I'm disappointed in, as I look back, I was just trying to find his funds, what, what other funds besides general fund monies could we use? And I, I asked the question probably five times. And, you know, I, I kept getting disappointed with the answers, but that is looking at our impact fees. Uh, and, and seeing if we can use any of those fees. And frankly, the, the answer back from, from our staff and attorneys was, you know, we have an impact fee study and it sort of sets out what we can use those funds for. But it, it does invite the question whether we should a- at some point revisit our impact fee study. Because, you know, we're putting in a tremendous amount of money for basically a city hall. And, but we don't have the language in our fee study that says, okay, you can use it for this kind of a nuanced purpose. I was not contemplated. At least not directly. And it would be interesting to look at um legally what, what we can do there going forward, especially over seven years, whether we could revisit that fee study and see if there's any opportunities to use funds other than the general fund. But I'm very excited about this. I, I do think uh staff morale is extremely important. And just community wins like this and, and being on that property will be important for us. But absolutely, I am cognizant of the costs. And so uh hopefully we'll be able to, you know, keep the cost down as much as possible and have no overruns. Does anybody have an idea of when, uh, in terms of the timeline, what the construction timeline is? In terms of completion of, you know, is it five months, four months, six months? That would be important. But thank you first. Uh, uh, Priya, thank you and, and staff for bringing this forward. A lot of moving parts. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see uh, I see Ms. Nixon.
Yes, thank you so much. So uh Vice Mayor Doring, to answer your first question about the uh police portable unit for the locker room. So that will have bulletproofing um to keep it safe. And then there'll be a fence around that as well. So to answer your question on that. And then um in regards to your question about the construction schedule, um, so we've actually already been in touch with the contractor. Of course, the contract is still up for consideration tonight. And we've been strategizing on uh how we can move forward with mobilization and beginning the project. It is slated to be a sixty calendar day project. Of course, we are cognizant of some of the supply chain issues. So we're working on a strategy on that. The priority will be to get the administration wing up first. Um, and then we'll be working with a contractor uh at the same time to get all of the uh security measures in place for the police wing as well. So we'll keep you updated on that timeline. Uh, but I hope that answers your question on um, in terms of we're, we're going forward as, as quickly as we But I hope that answers your question on, in terms of we're, we're going forward as, as quickly as we can and I look forward to providing updates on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nixon. I appreciate it. You did answer my questions.
Thank you. And I'm going to open it to public comment in just a moment. But I do have a thought and something that the Vice Mayor said, and, and this could be an appropriate place to, to, to look at a subcommittee to stay engaged with the college as this moves forward. I'd certainly want to look to our city manager to think about how something like that might be organized in a way that, 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 that works with staff and the efforts of staff. I know Vice Mayor Doring's been on this for quite a while, so I'd like to see him certainly be part of anything that moves forward, but perhaps we can also look at another council member at some point here to, to sort of form a team so that we, we keep those linkages, communication being so important. We're, we're so close, don't want to have things slip because of, of communication that doesn't happen. So if I look to Mr. McCann here briefly, any thoughts on as this moves forward? And perhaps this is something for our new city manager to help organize. But I want to make sure that whatever we do syncs with staff.
Yes, thank you. I think it's an excellent idea. I have had two or three conversations with the former interim CEO of the college. And so, you know, myself and interim speaking with another interim about potential things was interesting and we were, you know, encouraging each other and, and all of that. But I do think it's, it's absolutely imperative for the council and the city manager to communicate, engage with folks at the college. They're an important, important landowner. We will be partnering with them. It's a lovely asset. It's something that we ought to determine the best use of it. And I'm sure they would be very open to having a dialogue. So I think it would be a very good idea to have a couple of council members work with city staff and just begin that, that dialogue with the folks at the college.
Okay, very good.
That, that's not on your agenda tonight, so we won't be appointing anyone tonight. I saw Joanna looking at me. But we I know. She's keeping, she's keeping us honest. So we, we, we'll bring that back. We certainly have time. And we'll have some opportunities when we move in with the ribbon cutting, some type of celebration to include folks from the college and really just start celebrating our partnership together. So lots to come.
Great, thank you. So I, I'm going to make sure to open public comment here. I'll look to our city clerk to see if we have input.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, very good. I'll bring it back. We'll see if there's any additional council comment, and then I'll look for a little guidance from Ms. Jin about how I'm going to read these resolutions. I'm seeing no council comments. So I'm, I'm looking at right under the recommended action. There's a summary of the resolutions. Is that enough for me to read? Or do I need to read the actual resolutions?
I would recommend as City Manager McCann to, to read the titles of the resolutions for the record. And you can read them all at once.
I'm sorry, Joanna, but perhaps we can have a motion from a council member to approve the five resolutions a second, and then maybe we can ask Ms. Jin to help us out and perhaps she can read those for us if you don't mind.
That would be very nice. Thank you.
Awesome. Sorry.
I'll second.
Thank you. So the motion would be to approve the following resolutions related to the Napa Valley College tenant improvements. See 22-0001. The first one approving Murray Building Incorporated of Sonoma, California as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. Authorizing the city manager to execute, enter into and implement the contract by and between the city and Murray Building Incorporated for project number C 22-0001. Napa Valley College Tenant Improvements at the amount of $1,167,379. And authorizing the Director of Public Works to approve change orders not to exceed 10% of the contract amount. Two, approving a professional services agreement with Marin IT for information technology upgrades and relocation services as part of the Napa Valley College Tenant Improvements Project C 22-001 in an amount not to exceed $219,259.86. And authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Three, approving a five-year lease agreement with Besta Modular for the St. Helena Police Department portable locker room for an amount not to exceed $423,956. Fiscal year 2223, $116,117. Fiscal year 2324, $58,013. Fiscal year 2425, $58,013. And fiscal year 2526, $58,013. Fiscal year 2627, $133,798. And authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Four, approving amendment number four to professional services agreement with Noel and Tam Architects STH Contract Fiscal Year 2021-071 in the amount of $44,923 for construction administration for a total amount, for a total contract amount not to exceed $236,483. And authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. Five, approving a professional services agreement with Bracstone West Company for construction management services for the Napa Valley College Tenant Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $70,566.73. And authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you for reading that. And we have our motion and our second. So with that, we would look to our roll call.
Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Rishi Toh?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Eldred?
Yes. Thank you very much, everybody, for the focus on that. Ms. Jin, thank you very much for the reading and the guidance. Really appreciated. And so with that, then we'll move forward to our final item this evening. That's 10.1. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And I will look to Dr. Mitz, our Assistant City Manager, to get us into this item.
Great. Thank you so much. And I'm looking at City Manager McCann. Do you have any comments? Oh, and I see Paul.
Would it be appropriate to take a five-minute break?
Certainly we can do that. I think we've been at this for a while. So let's do, come back at eight, 8:41. Let's do 8:42 and then we'll see how far we get if we need to extend a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've got our council coming back on. It looks like we're almost all back. We've got our city manager, our city attorney, our city clerk and our assistant city manager in terms of presentation. Now we've got our council on. So we'll get back into the meeting here. I want to look to the Vice Mayor here. Do you think it's of value to vote to extend the meeting a few minutes now so we can try to get through this uninterrupted and hopefully finish up as soon as possible? Or we'll have to cause, call a pause in 10 minutes or so if not?
Yeah, I'll move approval that we extend at 9:15.
I think that's, I think that hopefully is adequate.
Well, second? Vice Mayor Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Rishi Toh?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Mayor Eldred?
Yes. Okay, so we're at item 10.1. This is consideration and proposed approval of a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. And this was prepared by Dr. Mitz, our Assistant City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, before
Yes, if you would like to leave in here.
Awesome. Yeah, before April gets into her, I think she's got 37 slides tonight. No. I, I just want to thank April and Mandy and all the staff for the hard work. This budget preparation started before I arrived when Mr. Presswich was still with the city. And I can attest to lots and lots of work by staff. I think we've got a good budget for the council. It reflects much of the conversation that we had earlier tonight about reserve and choices and, and being prudent and strategic. I, I won't go into all of the elements. And neither will April, to be honest. We're going to have a high level summary because we know that you've already been immersed in this. I will say that we are recommending some use of, of unallocated funds. We think we've got some needs. We think there's some good argument to utilize those, those funds. We'd be happy to explain our rationale. You may have a different point of view and that's okay too. So we'd like to lay that out if you're, if you have a question, we'd like to answer that. So first, thank you, April. Very nice job, you and Mandy putting this together. So can you walk us through?
Great. Thank you very much. And the city clerk will be sharing the presentation with us. And City Manager McCann had one number off. It's actually 137 slides. So we just say, okay, before us tonight is the adoption of the fiscal year 2223 budget. So the first slide, just as City Manager McCann had stated, this budget document did not just magically appear overnight. We do have a lot of steps. And in this particular instance this year, we did start the whole budget process in January. So in front of you is a budget development. I will not review every single line item on here, but you can see that we did take a lot of
If I may interrupt, is, is it just my screen? This is looking very small to me. Perhaps it's just my screen.
It, it is very small. And again, I won't go into it in detail, but it's just to, to show council and show the public all the steps that went into the and show the public all the steps that went into this process. And in addition, how many different departments and elements and subcommittees and staff went into the development of the process? So this is just our budget development calendar. We're in the very last stages of it where we are bringing the budget for adoption tonight to city council. Next slide, please. So when we did develop the budget, and this was mentioned in the staff report, but I really wanted to kind of reiterate the thought process that went into the budget. What we did is we did try to align every decision that we made with council goals as well as the council work plan. We did make very conservative revenue assumptions, knowing that we are still getting out of the pandemic, and we also want to be sensitive to, you know, things can still shift in the economy. We did take into consideration healthcare and labor costs as they are increasing and have been increasing. We did take into consideration the restoration of physicians as well as the addition of physicians to the city. We did take into consideration an increase to per's unfunded liability as well as the additional discretionary payment that city council has made a council decision and policy to continue to fund the unfunded liability on a 15-year clip. We did look at one-time versus reoccurring expenses, and then we also did look and take into consideration the use of fund balance for one-time expenses. Next slide. The city council goals. Again, we just want to make sure that these are first and foremost in the front of everybody's thinking, so I do want to just do a quick overview of what the council established goals are. The first is to improve and maintain safe and reliable city infrastructure with commitment to environmental stewardship and public health, to stabilize, maintain, and improve access to housing, to enhance organizational performance and commit to full public participation, ongoing communication, and regional collaboration, to ensure long-term economic sustainability while supporting St. Helena's charm and rural character, to support thriving families and enhance the safety, well-being, and healthy development of our youth, and finally, to support initiatives that respond to and plan for climate change. Next slide. So an update from the May 31st, 2022 budget workshop that we had where we presented the general fund, water fund, and wastewater fund. What we did is we did make some modifications to the budget that's being presented for council for adoption tonight. The modifications, the considerations that staff did take into consideration when we were looking at modifications is council's interest in maintaining a fund balance greater than 30%. So we did really take that to heart, and we wanted to make sure that we're not bringing our levels down below that 30% reserve. We want to continue to maintain the conservative revenue and expense projections. We did want to maintain sufficient cash balance for emergencies. We did make use of unrestricted fund balance generally for one-time costs and not ongoing costs. So when you see the list that's presented to you in this presentation as well as in the staff report, only one of those items was for reoccurring costs. And then also to maintain sufficient cash balance for funding contingencies related to the wastewater treatment plant project for an inter-fund loan if it's necessary. And so we did want to keep that into consideration. You'll see when we updated our net position, we actually have an individual line item for that if we do need to use general fund money for an inter-fund loan, and also to know that inter-fund loan would be on a short-term basis. Next slide. So here are the updated items that were included in the final budget document for your consideration tonight for approval. So the first is a restoration of a recreation position, and so that does need, that is the only non-one-time cost that is reoccurring cost, meets two of the city council's goals for an annual amount of $130,000. Library part-time staffing for fiscal year 22-23, an additional $20,000. And so this is to serve two purposes. The first purpose is as minimum wage increases, we want to make sure that we can still continue to have the part-time staffing we have in the library. And then we also want to add the ability to have a couple extra hours that they could do throughout the year. The Napa Valley College tenant improvements for the construction, so this is an additional $500,000. Replacement of police vehicles. We did have that in the budget for the past two years, but unfortunately, due to budgetary constraints, we'd actually started, we had to remove those from the budget. So we do have a very aging vehicle force, and we do need to replace some of those vehicles. Typically, what we do is we do what's called a lease, but it's actually, we pay it off in five years, so it's essentially a loan. What we're making the recommendation, because we do have a healthy fund balance right now, to actually pay outright cash for those vehicles, so we're not paying interest on that. Replenishment of the equipment replacement fund of $100,000. What this $100,000 is, is we have been slowly putting money into an equipment replacement fund for the Napa Valley College move, particularly when it comes to the IT infrastructure. We are depleting a lot of the capital equipment replacement fund, and what we want to do is be able to start replenishing those funds with some of these, the fund balance. Parks, it's a large equipment replacement. In particular, it is a mower with a flail attachment, and I've learned all about flail attachments, and it's to allow us to be able to do a lot more vegetation management a lot more efficiently in our parks and some of the surrounding areas. Marketing promotion, so this again is one-time funding for $50,000, and this is separate from the chamber contract that was approved by city council at the last meeting. So this is a completely separate line item in the city budget for the city manager to be able to negotiate with the chamber to add one-time money as a separate budget specifically for targeted marketing promotion. Additional funding for vegetation management. We are very excited that we did get the first part of the FEMA grant for vegetation management, but we know because of timing of those grant funds and the planning involved, we also know that we need to do some more immediate vegetation management, so it's adding some additional funding in there for that. Again, the vegetation management, this is the FEMA match, so it's a 25% FEMA match that's required for the grant that we are receiving. And then the final item is for $50,000, and it's for an interim street improvements on Oak Avenue and College Avenue, and I believe it's more directed towards the Oak Avenue portion, to be able to make sure that we do have some funding in there. So the roads are really bad. The Oak Avenue's portion is not slated for replacement for five years, but we want to be able to do some interim street improvements, so it's not as bad of a road. So that's for $50,000. So the total is $1.2 million, so $1,258,750 that we're making the recommendation we've added into the proposed budget. Next slide. So with this, those were estimated net position. So you'll see our estimated unassigned fund balance at 620, or that should be 630, 2022, is $10.4 million. Our estimated revenues are still $17.2 million, almost $17.3 million. Our new estimated expenses is $18.6 million. So the difference between what was presented on May 31st and what's presented today, on May 31st, we are anticipating use of reserves of $105,000. And so with those additional items, it's now $1.3 million, which leaves our estimated unassigned fund balance at $9 million, which is 49%, which is still above the council reserve level of 30%. And then in addition, we put a placeholder in here of a $2 million inter-fund loan if necessary, just so we want to make sure that even if we need to do that loan, we want to make sure we're still maintaining sufficient balance in our reserves or unassigned fund balance. So that brings our unassigned fund balance to $7 million if we do need to use that $2 million as a temporary loan. So it brings the estimated net position down to 34%. And then if you can go to the following slide, please. So the other exercise that we did, and this was based off of some council feedback that we had before on how do we determine net position? So what we did is we really looked at what the net position was or the unrestricted fund balance based off of the reoccurring expenses. So it's taking the same information, so you have the same estimated revenues, the same estimated expenses, but we broke out approximately $1.4 million of the fiscal year 23 budget is for one-time expenses only, so non-reoccurring. So we removed those out. We still have the same revenue, less expenses, so the same use of reserves of $1.3 million. But if we look at our unassigned net position, so this $9 million, the $9 million and the $7 million respectively, that is still what our ending fund balance is. But instead of taking the estimated unassigned fund balance and dividing it by the total expenses, we divided that by the estimated expenses that were reoccurring. So that gives you an idea for, you know, kind of follow it up on the conversation we had earlier with the financial policy, on the where the reserve levels look like if you truly look at your reoccurring expenses. So in the first scenario, without any funds being loaned for the wastewater treatment plant, we're at 51%. And then if we do take into consideration a potential loan to the wastewater fund for the completion of that project, we're at 41% unassigned reserve level. Let's go to the next slide, please. So this is the enterprise funds, the estimated fund balances. There were no substantial changes from what was presented on May 31st, and so these numbers are, the net, or sorry, the ending fund balance, the unassigned reserve is the exact same dollar amount that we had on May 31st. Next slide. So with that, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the adoption of the fiscal year 22-23 budget, and both myself and city manager McCann are up for any questions you may have, and I do want to echo his sentiments. I appreciate all the time and energy for all of the department heads that put into this, the time and energy for the council members for the budget workshops, as well as in particular, Mandy Kellogg, and unfortunately, she was not able to be at the meeting tonight. It was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that went into this document, so I do appreciate all the help and support and the feedback from everybody, and including the leadership and guidance of city manager McCann.
Thank you, Dr. Mitz. So with that, I'll look to the council to see if there's input here. And I am seeing no hands from council. I will look, first, I'll say thank you very much for the just focused work, and the first slide you presented walking through the process, you know, shows really all the steps that need to be taken, so it's really appreciated to keep this focused. So with that, if there's no council comment at this point, I'll open it to public comments, see if we have public comment at this point.
There is none.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to council, look for additional council comment or look for a motion in terms of adopting the budget. I'm looking to, I see council member Hardy.
Thank you. Well, briefly, I just want to comment that the discussion of alternative methods of calculating our our fund balance just calls out for me the importance of doing some very thoughtful work on our policies so that we have a defined methodology for making those calculations and then have a consistent basis for understanding where we are. I do remain very concerned about where things are headed.
Thank you. Additional council comment? I'm seeing council member Hall.
Thank you. April and Mandy and the rest of the team, thank you very much. I don't think in my life I've ever had to prepare, you know, 380 pages in a single document, and thankfully, I'm never planning on ever doing that. So I just want to thank you for hanging in there. I did want to follow up just on council member Hardy's comments regarding table three. I was wondering if you did the reverse exercise also, which was remove any non-recurring revenue and look at it that way.
We did not in this exercise remove any non-recurring revenue, because the thought behind it, right, wrong, or indifferent, you know, we definitely, I agree with council member Hardy about defining what, you know, how we want to look at this. But the reason we didn't is because we really, you're looking at the cash fund balance at the end of the year divided by your operating expenses. So that's why we did not, we did not that incorporate that in that scenario.
Yep, understood. Thank you. My my other comment is on the additional staff recommendations, and it's more of just sort of a process thing that would be great for us to work on as we're engaging in sort of this longer-range financial plan and making perhaps some changes to the calendar that you mapped out at the start there. You know, it's interesting to note, there's about $1.3 million worth of additional items here that we're seeing kind of for the first time tonight, and we spent 50% of our budget workshop time allocating about $210 for the nonprofit. And if there's a way, you know, we spent a lot of time, three hours of our six hours allocated on 200 grand, and yet, here we are tonight looking at five times that number, coming out of the same bucket basically, and without a lot of time or effort to comment on any of it. I mean, it all looks like it's needed stuff. There's no doubt. My druthers, of course, are always to give everything to Director Rincon and ask him to run faster. That's just how I view the world. There was a comment in here earlier about the 30-year list, which I loved seeing. It would be great if we actually, again, as we're thinking about how do we revamp our planning process a little bit going forward? Where is the list? What's our process for updating it? How do we, how do we actually incorporate it in some new documents going forward? What's the dollar number? And are there any, you know, items on there that could be funded with the 1.3 million? I don't know. I mean, I have literally no sense for that, so. That's kind of it. I did have one comment on the large equipment replacement for parks. It sounded like this was some sort of mowing tool, and I know that our spray fields grow rapidly because it's one of the few places that gets really rich nutrients routinely. And I know that we have a gentleman or two who spend quite a bit of time trying to keep that mode for us. I'm wondering, is there any way we could view that differently as, you know, perhaps a cow or sheep method of mowing? And let those, let those animals roam around out there. We could probably bring in a farmer who could help us do that, or even find somebody who knows a little bit about Timothy or some other types of hay who would like to lease that from us and harvest that every single season going forward and maybe turn what is currently a minor cost for us into at least a couple of dollars going forward. It might also help us, you know, as we transition away from gas mowers to something that's a little bit more sustainable method here. Those are really my only initial comments in going through it. Thank you again for the work on it. Much appreciated.
Thank you, and I'm seeing council member Chateau.
Thank you. Council member Hall, my kids would just be thrilled with your suggestion. My concern is that it's used in areas that wouldn't be appropriate for grazing. I love, you know, I love the grazing with the animals and in all, any area we can, but I just ran into one of our city staff today. I was so impressed. They did cut down all of the foxtails and the weeds. It's also a fire risk over at the dog park, so in that big field. And then I believe today I didn't get to check it yet, but they were also going to be doing that big open field where the hunter subdivision would be behind Adams. to be doing that big open field where the hunter subdivision would be behind Adams. They also do that. So I think I've seen it, how much it's needed and how often, you know, those grasses grow up and what a service it is to the community and all of the fuzzy animals that we have that people just love and how expensive those foxtails are. And just of course, with the fire risk and safety that I, I really think that this equipment is needed.
Thank you. And I'm seeing city manager McCann. And I, I think the idea of looking at a grazing program in the future is an excellent idea. I, I certainly believe this, this equipment is needed now, but I do keep being open to those new ideas are great too. Mr. McCann.
Great. Thank you. The piece of equipment has a number of, of uses. The dominant use really is to help us do vegetation management more efficiently. A flail, flail mower is quite an impressive device, but it will also help with mowing the wastewater treatment plant field more efficiently. But the other thing though is with the, the new technology that we're putting in at the treatment plant, our reliance on evaporation and, and growth will be greatly reduced. And so we'll be able to utilize that tertiary treated water for a more productive use, if you will, you know, irrigating land around town, which will free up potable water. So there, there will be changes at the treatment plant for sure in, in the not-too-distant future, this time next year, just about, we expect to be online. And so there'll be an opportunity for Mr. Rincon perhaps to augment his title and become a public works director slash sheep herder or farmer or wheat grower or alfalfa or something like that. But so there's an opportunity there for sure.
Thank you. Council member Chateau.
Thank you for letting me. I had one other comment. I love council member Hall. You talked about the greenhouse gases with the mower. I just assume that we're making the decisions to do the most efficient, you know, new forms of energy if possible. I don't know if there is an electric mower. I have no idea, but I just want assurances that staff did consider that when making this decision.
Mr. Rincon, any input there?
I'm always keeping an eye for those opportunities, council members. Unfortunately, right now, a lot of the public works, devices, tools, trucks are still, you know, powered by, by petroleum. And I see it changing, but it's going to take another five or 10 years before we get to that, to that level of having large enough batteries to run a device like this.
Thank you. But we do know also that the gas technology is improving. So a new machine should have, you know, increased efficiencies. So with that, I, I believe I have open public comment. I'll bring it back and to, to look and see if there's no additional council comment, if we have a motion here on recommend, adoption here. I'm seeing council member Hall.
I, I'm happy to move adoption of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget as, as drafted.
I'll second that motion and add my heartfelt thanks to staff for all this work.
Council member Hardy.
Oh, Ms. Jen.
I'm just clarifying that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that it would be the resolution adopting the budget to per fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three budget and just the resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council member Hall.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Chateau.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Mayor Ellsworth.
Yes. And also with deep thanks to Dr. Metz, to Mandy Kellogg, to Mr. McCann for all the work on this and, and everybody from staff for the participation. So that was our last item. I, I want to, we're going to touch on just a few things as we say good night here. First, we're going to skip our first meeting in July, so we'll come back on the twenty-sixth of July. Second is fourth of July coming up. Want to thank our Parks and Rec and Mr. Janz for all the work in making it a fire safer, uh, fourth of July. Want to just keep reminding folks, let's be as fire safe as possible, conserve water where we can. And take a few moments now, I want to recognize Mr. McCann, Jim McCann here. I believe I'm seeing his wife Gretchen on the line. And want to thank you too. I mean, we, we've been so fortunate to have Mr. McCann here. And as I've said before, as a mayor, when you hear there's a city manager transition, your eyes open very wide and your, your heart rate gets a little faster. And having Mr. McCann willing to be here and really guide us with a fabulously steady hand through this period as we look to our new city manager. Words cannot express my gratitude. And I know also other council members will have some input too and some thanks. Council member Hardy.
Yes, I just want to say, Jim, it's moments like this when virtual meetings really suck. It would be so much more satisfying to be able to thank you in person. And who knows, after the meeting's adjourned, propose a toast. But thank you. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. I'm seeing council member Chateau.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It was really impressive how you came in like you did and how much you helped during these public meetings of a really nice way. And I'm appreciative that I got to work with you and see you in action. So thank you.
Thank you. And council member Hall.
Thank you. I just want to echo the, the kudos, Jim. I think what you've done in a short period of time has just been tremendous. Your, your depth of the local knowledge has been invaluable. Your guidance, I think, not only to staff, but I think the council as well, has been just terrific. And it's been a real pleasure working with you. Hopefully, hopefully we, we have an opportunity to, to continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Doring.
I'll echo the same comments, Mr. McCann. It's been absolutely wonderful working with you. I'm almost tempted to have a meeting scheduled in the early part of July just to have you back with us because there's so much more we can do with you. I think we should also thank ourselves, council members, for making an excellent decision on Mr. McCann to steward us since February until now. Very impressive. You're so well-respected here. And I wish you the best in all of your endeavors and looking forward to having a drink with you sometime in the future in Napa. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's been very enjoyable. I, you know, sometimes wish that I was 10 years younger because it'd be fun to spend 10 years with you all because there's certainly no shortage of interesting and challenging projects. But I'm convinced that St. Helena has an extremely bright future. So you're focused and have really good council members who are, take the, have the interest of the community forefront. The staff that I've worked with are just extremely dedicated, very, very hardworking, very talented. So the community is very fortunate to have you all. So I've been, I've enjoyed my time. I've got a couple more weeks here. So I've got a list on my wall of things that I'd like to try to accomplish. So we'll see if we can make some headway on those. But I can just tell you, you're in really good hands with the, the staff, the line staff and all of the different departments, really good folks. Our city attorney, Ethan, is just been really a, a pleasure to work with. We're very fortunate to have him. Certainly nice to have Joanne tonight and to meet her. April, it's wonderful to have her in a, a new position where, where her talents, I think, can blossom. And I think she's really going to thrive. Our department heads are really great to work with, very talented, again, super hardworking. The city clerk is an extraordinary clerk, very patient. I can tell you that because I bug the heck out of her all the time, but she's, we're very fortunate to have her. And then I think you're going to be in very good hands with Anil. Mr. Camello is going to fit right in. And I think you need to, I think everybody, the community, the council, our boards and commission staff really just need to help him be successful because he's got the tools to do that, but he needs, he needs the help, the teamwork, the collaboration to do that. So I really appreciate Paul contacting me saying, hey, there's an opportunity. Would you be interested? So thank you, Mr. Doring. And I really thank the council for having the confidence to let me help you out over the last couple of months. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I want to just ask if, if Dr. Metz or, or Cindy would just make a comment from staff, just to help round this out a little bit, if one of you would, would mind to just chime in a little bit.
It has been absolute joy working across the hall from you, Jim. You've been an absolute treat and you've really been so professional and helpful and encouraging. I thank you so much and I'm really going to be sad to see you go.
Thank you.
But I don't, I don't think there's much more that I can add to that. I mean, Jim has, Jim has been fantastic to work with. You always get anxious when you get a, you know, a new boss in. But it has been a lot of fun, but he's, you know, he, he shoots straight from the hip. He's, he's honest. He's been great to work with. And, you know, he's on speed dial. I have his own personal phone number, so he can't get rid of me that fast. That's all I'm saying. So thanks, Jim.
We've got it for a few more weeks. We'll get everything we can.
Yeah, I, I got to admit that I was a little Larry when Jim came here as well. But talk about an open communicator and somebody that really has your back. Because true colors, the vice mayor yesterday and the mayor both got to see him take the bull by the horns yesterday in the meeting, where he very easily could have just taken a step back. But the way he directed that meeting alone says a lot for his leadership. Thank you, Jim, for everything you've done. And now I will see you before you go. We still have some work to do.
Indeed. Thank you.
Very good. Well, thank you, everybody. This was a really terrific meeting. And Jim, thank you for your leadership over the, the last many months of the challenging, challenging period. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the kind words, everybody.
So with that, happy Fourth. And we'll see everybody on the twenty-sixth. If there's nothing else for the good of the group, we'll adjourn and see you at the next meeting.
Right. Bye, everyone.
Good evening.
Good night. Thank you.